We can't really go very far without him, can we?
We should get the principal.
Principal's not here.
Ah.
There he is.
Aw.
Here. He wasn't at Rotary today either.
That's right.
Uh-uh.
We voted against. We voted against it, so you're sorry.
I'm trying hard not to concentrate on this. This is why they keep cities.
Yeah. All right. I hereby call the 2,264th Meeting of the Milwaukee City Council to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First up, we have the Milwaukee High School Outstanding Student Achievement Award for February 2018, presented to Tessa Ryder, I'm gonna guess.
Tessa.
Yeah. By Principal Mark Pender, who is... You gonna tell us about the rest of it tonight, too?
Tell about what?
That you're leaving.
I wasn't planning on it, but...
You're just gonna sneak out the back door one day, and that'll be that.
I have three months and 25 days left, so I'm not counting.
No one's counting.
Gonna take full advantage of those three months.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members. Today, this is a February presentation because we were snowed out that day. And so, thank you for accommodating us on the schedule. I present Tessa Ryder, senior at Milwaukee High School. She is an outstanding young woman and has many accomplishments, which I'm gonna let her tell you a little bit more about that. But I tell you one thing is that she is one that is a mature and deep thinker, because I tell you, she's the editor, co-editor of the yearbook.
Editor-in-chief.
What?
Editor-in-chief.
Oh, editor-in-chief. I couldn't. Editor-in-chief, excuse me. And, you know, getting, you know, in student publications, you know, there's laws that have been passed, actually when I first became a principal, that, you know, I don't have the right to censor student publications, and when you do that. So then, when you get into some gray areas about what should be published and what shouldn't be, but she is a very mature thinker, and I really appreciate that about her, because she really does, you know, think about, "Oh, what would this look like 40 years from now?" I go, "Yeah." So anyway, I present to you Tessa, but I want... Tessa, you just explain to them a little bit, you know, you've taken your, you know, the standard AP classes, she has outstanding GPA, 4.0? 4.0. She's involved with, you know, National Honor Society, she's worked with, you know, other charitable organizations, and just does some great things. So, take it away, and tell them about your college plans, too.
Um, I'm hoping to get into Mount Holyoke College in Massachusetts. I get to find out March 1st, hopefully, so if I don't get in there...
March 1st is past.
Oh, sorry, April 1st.
Okay.
I wish.
There's a letter waiting for you at home somewhere.
Yeah, that would be, that would be great. If not, my backup school is Humboldt State University in Arcata, so either school I'm really, would be very excited to attend.
Yeah.
Um, I want to study biology as of now, but because most places don't make you declare until sophomore year, I'm gonna take some time to figure it out and really test the waters, see if I can try out all the other potential majors and find the best fit for me.
What's been the most important thing you've done in high school?
I think that that would probably be what I've been working with this year, the Equity Task Force at our Milwaukee High School. I started going to the meetings because I was just interested. I went with some friends to see how they were gonna run, but I got involved with the making of a blog, so I've been interviewing students using some of the skills I have from yearbook on any equity-related issue, some with like racial equity, gender equality, some people have talked about just feeling safe in their school. And getting to hear different students' perspectives and type them up without my input, just like word for word what they say, has been really fun, and just seeing, like, because I get to see the blog, seeing the views, and seeing how our school is really seeing the stories that their fellow students have put out there.
Good. And she's editor-in-chief of the yearbook. And our yearbook has won how many awards?
Um, we got two awards last year. We got Most Outstanding High School Yearbook, and then a first-place award from the National Scholastic Press Association.
So...
Wow. That's amazing.
That's very impressive.
Thank you.
All right, so, you wanna draw your eyes? Go ahead, you can start.
Sure. Actually, I'm gonna just say that we have someone here on staff who...
I wanna go first. So I'm gonna call this one. Hi, I'm Anne, I'm the city manager. Tessa is also my babysitter. So she's not moving anywhere. We've talked a lot about schools that she wants to go to, and I just wanna call out that she is not only an incredible academic and a fabulous dancer and a very good person, she is just kind. She's so kind, and she's been so lovely with my daughter. So, it's on a personal note, but I'm so proud of you, and I want you to stay here.
Thank you.
Exactly.
But you would have good company and alum. We have our old... No, Representative Power, I think, went to...
Mount Holyoke.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, our representative power.
Our current state rep.
Mm-hmm.
Who used to be a city councilor.
That's right. Yeah, so, you can ring her up, and I'm sure she'd be glad to tell you all about her experience, and...
I'd love to do that, yeah.
I will pass along your information to her. Congratulations on all of your...
She won't do that, by the way, 'cause she wants your phone number to use, so you'll babysit for her.
I promise.
Pass along your information to Representative Power.
I did not have any kind of secret motive there. I found a lovely babysitter in my neighborhood, thank you very much. But congratulations on all of your achievement, and also congratulations to the adults that I see behind you. I always like to thank them, too, because they're so proud of you, and they should be, and so is your community. Thank you very much for all that you're doing.
Yeah, this amazing resume, the dance, you didn't even, the dance didn't really even come up, but it looks like you are pretty serious about the dance, too. I will just tell you, I was yearbook editor at my high school, and, you know, looking back on it, I'm like, you know, what was I thinking that that was preparing me for? And, because there's not a yearbook when you're sort of 30 years old, you know? But I got lots of great skills from that, and I think it's all, it's an experience that I really look back fondly on being the yearbook editor. I was yearbook editor way before you had all the technical tools you have now, where you, we were actually like laying out lines on graph paper and stuff, but, um...
Memograph.
Not quite mimeograph, but, um, and I would just, I'm also someone who went a long way away to go to college, and I never regretted that, so don't let the babysitter people keep talking. And, um, and I also didn't declare major till my junior year, so don't get in a hurry. Take the time to investigate what you wanna do, but I'm sure you'll do great whatever you decide to do.
Thank you.
Another amazing high school student from Milwaukee High School. We keep turning them out, so thank you for doing that. That's awesome. You know, one of the questions I've always wanted to ask some of the others, and I keep forgetting, too, so now all of a sudden I thought of it, is was there something during your high school years you wanted to do and did not get the opportunity, and what, what was that, and how, how might you do something in that, whatever it was, in the future?
Well, actually, yeah, definitely. I, I always kind of wanted to get interested in the thespian department at our school. I think it's, it's an amazing program, but it's also a really big time commitment, just because when you have a program that good, you have to dedicate time to it. This year, I was, I was gonna audition for a tournament of plays, just kind of for fun, but it interfered with dance team, so I never got around to it. But I'm hoping in college, you know, I know there are a lot of like lower time commitment clubs, maybe, or even just doing some sort of a background dancing position on a play would be really interesting to me.
Yeah.
Because I always loved the performance aspect of dance.
Yeah. Good. Great. Well, I look forward to hearing about that in the future.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks so much for being here tonight.
Thank you, yeah.
Well, first, I wanted to thank you for your work on the Equity Task Force, because, especially with some things that are going on at the national level right now, and what we've seen in the past year, we, it's really important that we have folks like yourself that are fighting the good fight, and I, so I appreciate your work on that. And second, I'd like to ask a little bit more about Habitat for Humanity that you're, you do. Are you mostly local, or do you travel to do that? Does that work?
Um, for Habitat for Humanity, I actually haven't gotten the chance to participate on a build yet.
Okay.
We've been doing it locally in the Portland area, I believe. I think we have one maybe this weekend or last weekend.
It's the, I think it's the last weekend of spring break.
The last weekend of spring break, so I'm, I'm gonna be at Nationals, unfortunately.
Oh, okay.
But, um, yeah, for Habitat, I just joined this year, but the work that I've done with Habitat has mostly been helping out at fundraisers so that we can have the money to contribute to these houses. So that's another big part of it that I don't think is as publicized as the actual builds themselves.
And the exit building. Okay, well, it's something that I've been interested in for a while, but I'm not, I just wasn't sure of the time commitment, and whether, I have some friends who've done it overseas, that's their, that's their vacation, is they go somewhere and they help build a house, but I didn't know how common that was.
Yeah, at least for our high school, it's not the hugest time commitment, it's just finding the time to do the build itself.
Okay. Well, congratulations on this wonderful resume, and good luck on hearing about your new college.
Thank you.
So, I, too, was a yearbook editor. I didn't win any awards, but I know how much time and effort that took, and so to do that on top of all this stuff, I'm also a photographer, so we have that in common as well. That, that was eventually my career, so things you start to do in high school can turn out to actually be what you end up doing the rest of your life, or at least part of the rest of your life. Had nothing to do with being mayor.
And then you become mayor.
You know, it's, it never ceases to amaze me, the young people that you bring in here that do so many different things well, because it's hard to do just one thing well, and to have that level of focus and be a teenager at the same time is really impressive. So, I suspect you will have an amazing career at whatever you choose to do, and the schools you're talking about are excellent choices. So, congratulations for, for this, and good luck with, with school. I'm going to read too much stuff up here. "The city of Milwaukee is proud to recognize for outstanding student achievement in academics, civic engagement, and extracurricular activities at Milwaukee High School, Tessa Ryder. Let it be known to all that on this sixth day of March 2018, the city council of the city of Milwaukee and municipal corporation in the county of Clackamas in the state of Oregon recognize this student as an excellent example of the bright future of this community and nation." Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, good luck.
Congratulations.
And thank you, I'll see you in two weeks. Next up, we have Women's History Month, a proclamation, and this will be introduced by Greg Heimer from the Milwaukee Historical Society, and I think, is Carolyn joining? Or is Greg?
It's Michelle. Michelle, and, yeah, it's not Greg.
Oh, it's not?
No, it's Michelle and...
Did I miss? It says Greg Heimer.
It says Greg.
Just reading the script. Excellent. We didn't want to hear from him, anyway.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors, and city manager. My name is Michelle Heimer, Secretary of the Milwaukee Historical Society. It is mine and Carolyn's extreme pleasure to be presenting the proclamation for Women's History Month in March, sponsored by the Milwaukee Historical Society and the City of Milwaukee. The Milwaukee Museum, open Saturdays 1 to 5 p.m., located at 3737 Southeast Adams Street, has seen a huge increase in visitation and interest since the exhibit opened in Milwaukee, A History of the West Dogwood City, and our newly remodeled Claire Copen Bender Research Library. Since its grand opening in February, we have seen an increase from 10 visitors to about 25 each Saturday. The average visit time was 15 to 20 minutes, now it is 30 to 45 minutes. We expect even greater success at the museum as we move forward to implement, to implement Lot's Loop, an interactive walking tour of the downtown area, and our Women's History Project, covering life in Milwaukee from 1950 to present from a woman's perspective. It is my pleasure to introduce Carolyn Tomei. She has proven that you can be a loving parent, 17 of them, now that's a lot of love, and be active in your community and create a difference. Carolyn Tomei started off on the Planning Commission and was elected to city council in 1996. She became mayor in 1998, and in true Tomei fashion, won by landslide. In 2000, she became the first woman from Milwaukee to be elected to House District 41, ending her career as state representative on her terms by retiring in 2014. She is still active in the Island Station NDA and Kellogg Good Neighbor Committee. Carolyn is an inspiration to me, not only because she has the best backyard in the summertime, but also she has provided me with the confidence and encouragement to start my own business, be involved in the Linwood NDA, and be an active member of the Milwaukee Historical Society. Let's see, I lost my place here. Because she has done so much with her life as a mother and community leader, I know anything is possible for my future as well. Please welcome Ms. Carolyn Tomei.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members. I'm Carolyn Tomei, and I do indeed live in Island Station neighborhood, and I've lived there for 52 years. And thank you, Michelle, and for Greg, too, because they've done such a wonderful job at the Historical Society. It's just fantastic, so I'm, thank you very much.
Thank you, it's a good effort there.
I know it is, I know, but you are very important. I know it is, I know, but you are very important there. So I'm here to thank you and acknowledge your proclamation for Women's History Month. Thank you for doing that. First, I want to mention the strong women who helped make Milwaukee the wonderful place it is today. Women like Annie Ross, Florence Leating, Krista McDonald, Joy Burgess, the first female mayor, Nell Martin, our own state legislator, Corinne Power, our women here on the City Council, thank you all, our city manager, thank you. Recently, I heard Bob Dylan singing Times They Are Changing. And of course, we're celebrating those momentous changes that are currently happening, just exploding. It is so gratifying and wonderful. And it's a long time in coming. And I want to talk briefly about my own personal history. One of my first jobs was in a bank. I discovered a man who had the same job I did and was paid almost twice what I was paid. So I asked the manager, why was this so? And he told me, well, because he would be supporting a family. Well, he wasn't married, he didn't have a family, I was, and I did. I was living in a small town, and this little town had its own radio station. At night, they played classical music. During the day, they'd play pop. And they needed a DJ in the evening. Well, I had a background in classical music, so I applied for the job. I was told by the manager, who was a man, of course, oh, he couldn't hire me because he couldn't allow me to be driving at night. There it was, a married woman with children, right? Some years later, I was doing graduate work at OHSU in the psychiatric unit. The restrooms there were designated doctors and nurses. What kind of message did that send out? As I heard this young woman speaking and think of all the other students who come here to speak, they have no sense of the doors that had already been closed for women for decades and decades, maybe centuries. About that time, I was campaigning for the Equal Rights Amendment. I wonder why? I heard a wonderful speaker who described a big banner that was carried in a march supporting this campaign. It was a large picture of a large city, and the middle of the city was an enormous, deep hole. In the bottom of this hole was a very small pedestal. And on top of this pedestal was a very, very small woman. The caption said in bold letters, "Being on a pedestal is the pits." I went on to become the mayor of Milwaukee, which I loved. Eventually, as Michelle was saying, I was persuaded to run for the House of Representatives because no woman from Milwaukee had ever been elected to that position. Well, you can imagine my disappointment when I got to the House of Representatives and found it just another good old boys' club. When I would speak at meetings in those days, I was usually greeted with silence or sort of embarrassment. But often, a male voice would chime up with the same message that I had given, and that message was heard. And I thought, my golly, is there an echo in here? I was treated by the men like I didn't have a brain in my cute little head. There was no recognition that I had been on the Milwaukee City Council, as Michelle said, that I'd been mayor, I'd been chair of the Planning Commission. I, indeed, I had been involved in local boards and commissions for many years. I had a deep background of knowledge and experience in my city, in my county, and in the metro area. But the most egregious example to me of women's history at that time and the cultural imbalance of power happened to me in the not-too-distant past, six years and two days, to be exact. As far as I could determine after this event, this behavior had never happened before in the 100-year-old, long governmental history, nor indeed has it happened since. Many of you have been in or have seen the big room in the Capitol where the formal House of Representatives has its floor sessions. During one of these floor sessions in that very formal setting, we were debating a very difficult bill. I took a strong position opposing it. And as one of my, and as I was speaking, one of my male colleagues yelled out to me, "Shut your mouth." I was, and I am still stunned by that experience. It had never happened before, and it's never happened since. An interesting aspect of this is that he had been a law enforcement officer, and it was well-known that he carried a gun on the floor of the House. So he was safe, both as a man and especially as an armed man. He would never have dared to yell that at another man in that setting, and I would guess not anywhere. So I'm telling you these stories because they are personal to me and an important part of my history. I know I'm not alone in most of these experiences and that many of my, women of my age can identify. Okay, Carolyn, don't lose your place. Just a minute. I've also had a wonderful history, both as a woman and especially as a resident here in Milwaukee. And I want to tell you, I have never been treated poorly, both when I was on council, when I was on the Planning Commission, when I was on other boards and commissions. I've always been treated with the utmost respect, and I appreciate that. So I could tell you my good history, but that would take far too long, so I'm not going to be able to do that. Suffice us to say, thank you for the proclamation, keep up your good work, all of you, including Anne, and go, girls of every age, and make a new and better history. Thank you.
All right, well, I guess then I'm reading the proclamation. Whereas Milwaukee women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our city in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas Milwaukee women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the city by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside the home. And whereas Milwaukee women have played a unique role throughout the history of the city by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the city. And whereas Milwaukee women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our city. And whereas Milwaukee women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas Milwaukee women have served our country courageously in the military. And whereas Milwaukee women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movements, and especially the peace movement. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of Milwaukee women in history has been overlooked and undervalued. Now, therefore, I, Mark Gamba, Mayor of the City of Milwaukee and Municipal Corporation in the County of Clackamas in the State of Oregon, and with the full support and sponsorship of the Milwaukee Historical Society, do hereby proclaim March 2018 to be Women's History Month in Milwaukee, and do recommend its observance with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we put a photo, Mr. Mayor, with what his name is and the city council and the city manager as well?
No, I have a broken toe and I, it's killing me.
Do you want us all come to you?
Yeah, no. Just give me time.
TV, Greg.
Zip my boot.
History logo.
There you go. There you go. Good idea. Way back.
Way back.
There we go. Now everybody's settled. Beautiful. Thank you.
Take care.
All right. The next thing we have on the agenda is the Metro Housing Incentives update with Jess Larson. Metro, there you are. I didn't see you sneak in.
Thank you. I'm pulling, I'm pulling your presentation up. Great, and the mask works? Yeah. Okay. Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Jess Larson. I am with Metro's Government Affairs Team and happy to be with you this evening to bring a brief update about some work underway towards a potential regional measure for affordable homes. Thank you. Great. So I believe there's a document that's been shared with you, which is an outline of what will be discussed and a timeline of what will be discussed. But briefly, I'd like to walk us through just some context of the, of where we are as a community in, as it concerns affordable homes across the region. This is a map of rent increases as measured in between the years 2011 and 2015. And you can see that every part of Metro's boundary, every neighborhood or community has been impacted by significant rent increases over that four-year span of time. We have an overall average of rent increase of 25% for all renters, and in some communities as high as 35 or 40%, and as, as extreme as 70% in the North Portland community. We know that these rent increases can have a most significant impact on members of our community who live with limited and fixed incomes. And so in our research, we inquire to see where the greatest need for affordable homes are and who are the community members most impacting. And what we can find pretty clearly in the data, when we compare the number of households in our region with the number of homes that are available, that are affordable to those community members, we see a very clear shortage of affordable homes for family members and individuals, households and individuals with very low incomes. Sometimes in housing speak, we call, we call this median family income. So for households with a 0% to 30% median family income, which is for a household of one, less than $16,000 per year, or for a household of four, less than $22,000 per year, we see that there is a shortage of 36,000 homes for households with this kind of income. Examples of community members who live with these kinds of incomes are a senior citizen who has a fixed income from Social Security, or a minimum wage, full-time, working mother who may have a couple of children but still a low wage and struggles because on the market there is a great shortage of affordable homes. Moving ahead to the next income bracket, the 30% to 50% median family income range, we still see a significant shortage of about 11,300 homes. This, this range does not neatly match up, sorry, with the MFI ranges described below. So on average, 60% MFI household makes about $26,000 for a household of one, or 37,000 for a household of four. Subtract a little to get to that 50%. We're using two different data sets to draw this information, draw out this information. But in short, we can imagine a full-time worker in customer service making about $35,000 per year, or a preschool teacher making about $27,000 per year. And again, these are full-time, working families and individuals who still struggle to find housing that's affordable in their communities because of the significant shortage of affordable housing in our market. When we go to the next ranges of median family income, we actually don't find a shortage, we find a surplus. And that's not because those homes are out there available for rent, it's because the community members with lower incomes are renting up, living in apartments that rent more expensively than they can afford. But it's a home that, and they do what they can to make ends meet until a circumstance may arrive, such as rent increase. So drawing from that research, Metro made a commitment to look further into what are the tools and strategies that we want to expand upon, learn from, and increase our opportunities to solve for affordable housing throughout the region. And this work has been called the Equitable Housing Initiative, and it's been underway for about three years, primarily by my colleague, Emily Leeb. And she may have been here in times past, or you may have been a part of some of the community forums that have been hosted across the region. And we really identified four priorities that wanted to be, some four principles that we wanted to prioritize in our policy work. So first, mitigating displacement and helping for, to stabilize communities in place, leveraging growth. The, we, we live in, in many ways, we, this housing crisis is a product of our success in the community. So many people are drawn to the great opportunities of our region, and that is creating a shortage of supply in housing, driving up rent and, rent and housing costs. And so what are the opportunities to leverage that growth? Increasing and diversifying our supply of housing, looking for the missing middle solutions, the backyard cottages, et cetera. And then, of course, maximizing and opportunity, optimizing resources for affordable housing, which is the key principle we, we came to speak to you about tonight. Much of this work has been ongoing at Metro. We convene a Build Small Coalition. We invest in transit-oriented development across the region, prioritizing affordable housing opportunities in conjunction with transportation investments. We give planning grants out to our cities and counties to help promote tools for solving for affordability through our CET grants. And ongoing analysis and engagement with the community, such as the Equitable Housing Initiative. And lastly, regional funding and investment has been emerging as the priority that has so far gone unaddressed at the regional level, and our Metro Council has asked us to hone in and focus and solve for a solution. So tonight, I came to speak to you about a consideration for a potential general obligation bond, a measure that would go to voters as soon as November 2018, as a potential mechanism for funding more affordable homes across the region. This tool emerged at the top of the list after considering many, considering many, many kinds of revenue tools that are in use across the country at local, at, at the local level. However, in the State of Oregon, there are political reasons or technical reasons why those tools are not viable or in reach for us at this time. For example, the real estate transfer tax is one of the most common mechanisms used to fund affordable homes across the region, but it is constitutionally preempted in the State of Oregon due to voter initiative back in 2012. Similarly, sales taxes are a very common mechanism used to fund affordable homes. And where in many communities, it's easier to add a one percentage increase to a sales tax to fund affordable homes, it's harder here in the State of Oregon where we don't have a sales tax to start with. So that list left us with the general obligation bond and a construction excise tax. And what we heard very quickly from our local cities and counties at Metro was that the CET was a tool that you wanted to take up and invest in affordable homes at your, at your local level. And in fact, the City of Milwaukee has since passed a CET, joining the City of Portland as the other regional city to enact a CET. There are other counties and cities across the State of Oregon also using a CET to fund affordable homes. And Metro is looking to opportunities to support jurisdictions like yours in activating that tool to help fund affordable homes at the local level. And that left general obligation bond as the tool that was most likely to be successful used at the regional level. And both in being able to convene region voter support and also being able to significantly impact our need for affordable homes through this revenue tool that can fund upfront the investment of many, a significant investment in affordable homes. As you know, GO bonds fund capital, construction, and projects. So we're looking to create more affordable homes through new construction, land acquisition, or acquisition of existing housing supply, multifamily homes on the market that are currently somewhat affordable but may be lost. somewhat affordable but may be lost to the changes of market. And if we can invest in those homes or bring them into our public supply of affordability, we can preserve the rents as affordable permanently. So new construction, land acquisition, and building construction are the, or acquisition, pardon me, are the tools and the strategies in consideration for the implementation of this potential regional measure. Also, one other element that is known at this time of consideration is that Metro has no intention of becoming a housing authority or a housing developer. We have significant capacity and expertise across our region through our housing authorities. There's one in each county, our nonprofit partners, and many of our cities who implement affordable housing strategies and pass-through dollars from the state and federal level. So the intention is to primarily pass through the lion's share of this potential new regional resource back into the communities who are already implementing housing programs in their local communities. So where we are today is a very extensive regional conversation, conversations with councils like yourself, conversations with the broad community members. We are convening two advisory tables to help inform the development of this potential measure. They are the technical and the stakeholder advisory tables. And we are pleased to have Mayor Gamba sitting on the stakeholder table, and I think there are a couple other members who are serving on the table in our audience tonight. We are also conducting extensive research with those city partners and county housing authorities who are developing affordable housing to understand what's in the pipeline, what's needed to advance the pace at which we are producing affordable housing, what are the best ways for a potential new regional revenue source to be implemented, passed through, and to fit within the existing structure to increase the rate at which we're producing homes that are affordable across the region. So this technical work and this public engagement work will convene, or will conclude with a draft measure frame, a draft framework for the measure in early May. And we hope to come and have follow-up conversations with you and other councils and tables, community groups like this, to vet that draft framework and further hone in on what is recommended. And then it would be considered by our Metro Council in late spring, early summer, for a referral to voters for June, pardon me, for November of 2018. And for the audience and for your friends, here's sort of that fancy Gantt chart. I've learned that term now that I work at Metro, describing the layers of engagement and process underway in that timeline through till June, and that's also on the back of this document. So mostly, I wanted to come and share that quick update with you and take back to my colleagues at Metro and Metro Council, your feedback and recommendations of us as we consider this potential measure for voters this year.
So I get lots of opportunity to give feedback, so.
I believe we're all going to very much strongly support it, but I haven't talked to my colleagues. But given that housing was one of our goals, one of our top three goals this year, it's something that we're focusing on, and even just at our work session, that was one of our topics that we discussed. So this is very important. Full disclosure, I work at Metro, so I have been involved in some of these meetings. So I know a little bit about it more than maybe the average person. But I think, I think it's something that we have to do. It's a regional issue. I really do believe so. And as you mentioned, we have a lot of already, we have a lot of organizations working on this, but it's really, truly a regional issue that we need to create a way to find some funding for this. So I support it very strongly.
Thank you.
Did you say that they would be going out in November of this year?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct. Metro is working to potentially refer this measure in early June, so then a campaign structure would take up the effort for the ballot in November.
Yeah, well, we've been talking about it for quite some time in like the Clackamas County Coordinating Council and Counties Economic Development Commission, and amongst ourselves as city councilors, and that something needs to happen, and that sounds like a good move. I'm just surprised that it's November of 18. I thought it was going to be a little bit further down the road because of public education and--
Councillor Parks started, because you--
Am I not?
Sorry, thank you.
Oh, we always forgive. Well, they didn't need to hear me anyhow. Yeah, I thought it was going to be a little later down the road. There's a lot of public engagement that needs to go on. I just want to be sure that, you know, that that is done extensively, and, you know, we've got to get the pulse of the community and have them understand what this is really all about, and how it's going to benefit each community, and that. So thank you.
Thank you.
I think a lot of the thinking around that stems from the fact that we're probably going to be talking about a transportation bond in the following year, 20. And as Milwaukee is the poster child for what happens when you bring a beautiful piece of transportation infrastructure, what happens to the housing stock in that area? So I think a lot of the thinking around the timing is so that we have the pot of money to work ahead of the transportation projects to be able to start securing some of those naturally occurring affordable housing units and protect those as we, as we build out the transportation infrastructure that's needed. So it's been thought through. It is going to be a tight timeline, and it's going to be an all-hands-on-deck kind of a deal for us to get it passed. But I think, I think, you know, when you talk to people in the metro region, almost every walk of life, and you ask them, what's the number one problem in the area? And they will say, affordable housing. So I think it's, I think it's very doable.
Well, and I think, I mean, as mentioned, we've discussed it tonight. We've discussed it, you know, many times. We passed the CET, but not all the communities in the metro region are acting as proactively. And so I like this in that it doesn't create, I mean, it sort of creates momentum everywhere and incentive for all the other cities to get, get in gear and start planning and start addressing the issues. So that's one thing I really like about it, because I did worry that we're, you know, creating pockets of affordable housing in Milwaukee or wherever, but, and then other places are not. So it's, it's good to have a more concerted regional effort, I think.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming in and talking about this. You know, I just wrote in the pilot about Milwaukee's crisis, and I feel very strongly that, that we need to address this regionally, because, you know, as your initial slide, you know, showed, you know, we're all experiencing it. And when Portland rents rise, you know, people are forced to seek more affordable housing, and then suddenly the pressure's on those areas that used to have more affordable housing. And we're certainly seeing that here, not just with light rail, but just the pressures from the metro region pushing folks out to Gresham and to Milwaukee and to other areas kind of outside. So I agree, it's regional, it should be a regional solution. And for my part, I'll continue to try to talk to as many people who will listen to me and use my soapbox when I'm given the opportunity. And I think that we all will, I'm sure, share equally in that, and feel that same responsibility. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We look forward to keeping you posted, and please let us know what more we can do to keep you engaged in the conversation.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thanks for being here.
All right. All right, so. All right. This is the part of the agenda during which council will hear citizen statements regarding city business. Those wishing to speak must fill out--
Consent agenda?
Consent.
Yeah.
Did I skip the consent?
Yeah.
Darn. I get to read all this stuff, too. All right. Tonight's consent agenda includes the minutes of the February 6, 2018 work and regular sessions, and the February 13, 2018 study session. It includes a resolution making the following reappointments. Sarah Bagley, Chris Aberman, Chris Davis, Seraphine Levine to the Arts Committee, Troy Reschline to the Audit Committee, Vince Alvarez, Laura Hannah, Jacob Stetson to the Citizens' Utility Advisory Board, Lauren Lucevelt, Mary Nusdatter, Cynthia Schuster to the Design and Landmarks Committee, Charles Byrd, Gary Klein, Neil Hankerson to the Kellogg Good Neighbor Committee, Erin Lee, Ryan Healy, Krista Downs to the Library Board, Linda Blue and Martha Germany to the Park and Recreation Board, Adam Margot and Joseph Edge to the Planning Commission, and Leigh Garnett to the Tree Board. We have a resolution establishing a Library Fines Amnesty Week from April 8 through 14, 2018, in recognition of National Library Week. We have a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement with the Rights of Way Accountability Coalition for a joint audit of utility provider. Does any member of council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
No.
No.
I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as written. A second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard? Pass unanimously. Now, audience participation. I was just so excited to hear all of these people talk. All right. This is part of the agenda during which council will hear citizen statements regarding city business. Those wishing to speak must fill out a green speaker card available on the table in the hall and identify Agenda Item Number Four, Audience Participation. As council has other business items on the agenda this evening, speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Because the information provided during the public comment may be new to some councilors, the city manager will respond at the next council meeting to those comments that require follow-up. Before we begin, are there any follow-up reports from the February 20, 2018? Audience participation is over.
There are not.
All right. So. Go ahead, I'm going to try and get these in some kind of semblance of order.
So when you come up to speak, and you start, and you give your name and your address, then we'll start the three minutes, and the green light will come on. When you have one minute left, the green light begins to pulse. Then at 30 seconds, it switches to orange, and then at the end of that, it goes to red, and it goes eh. Eh means you're done. I mean, seriously. But, you know, we, there are a lot of people that want to speak tonight, so we would ask that you be respectful of that time. And so it is three minutes, three full minutes per person, so as long as I remember to turn it on, so.
All right.
It'll all work. But just watch the colors.
So first up, Patty J. And please give your name and city residence for the record.
Patty J., Milwaukee, 3430 Southeast Harrison. Mayor Gamba and council members, city manager and attorney. I'm coming before you again. I was here about two years ago, but I want to tell the story for those of us, for those who haven't heard it. All the digits and all the data and the statistics and the great words that Councilor Falconer wrote in the pilot about the housing crisis, our family lived it. About two years ago, I was recovering from surgery. We lived up just on Steen Court off of 60th. And I went out to get the mail, and I noticed a 60-day notice for eviction tacked on the outside of my home. Not hand-delivered, not mailed, as I found it was legal, but just tacked with no reason. We had been good tenants. My sons, they were quiet, they were good students. So I was in kind of a bind, not in showing what to do. I was in working at the time, recovering from surgery, and so I kind of put the wheels in motion. Fortunately for our family, I served in the military, so there was Veterans Funds with Clackamas County that saved us. I was able to stay in Milwaukee School District so my son could continue going to Milwaukee High. We were able to move into apartments we lived in before, but it was like the last place because inventory levels were so low. Fortunately, I was able to get back into a place because we didn't have the deposits. We didn't have any of the money, first and last month's rent. Not a lot of families have that same blessing, to be able to have those funds. Our family has thrived. We're doing well, but I'll never forget that feeling of going out to the mail and finding that notice. We still live with that kind of fear as a lot of renters. The no-cause evictions have got to end. I'm here also to advocate for relocation assistance. Again, I was lucky, my family was lucky. A lot of people do not have the funds. Relocation money costs a lot, thousands of dollars. So if we can consider that as another help to families until we get no-cause evictions, you know, illegal, I would ask you that you would consider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Donald Skinner?
My name is Donald Skinner. I was invited here by the Community Alliance for Tenants. I just walked in. I live in, on Bell Avenue, Milwaukee, apartment 3, 10,005 Southeast Bell Avenue, apartment 317. I lived in Milwaukee since 1984, as a member. Yes, I've lived in Milwaukee since 1984. That time, during that time, I've been blessed by living in public housing. If it weren't for that, I'd be in the street. When I first came to this metro in 1976, homelessness outside of downtown was fairly unheard of. However, homelessness is spreading like wildfire now. As a teen ran away, I lived in the streets often in warmer, drier weather. I don't want to do that again. I've seen some poverty. I've dumpster-dive for food. Many people have. I've known a number of people who have couch circled, lived in abandoned buildings, under bridges, and so on. Yes, all of this sounds a little like self-centered, because it is. But I've finally come to realize that my little demographic is a small part of a larger reality, and it is much easier to clear in spite from the sidewalk if you have that old them and us. This can be decisive in so many ways. I've learned there is only us, homelessness, and a threat of it traumatizes people. Homelessness, the homeless, taxpayers, and other citizens, tourists, and so on. I don't even want to think about the family, friends, and others who care about the homeless people. Living on the streets is never easy. You can't carry very much. You have to restock lots of things pretty much every day. I have seen Clackamas County deteriorate in quality of life since the mid-1990s. For this moment, I'm okay, but others aren't. What I've seen and know about life says this condition will only get worse with time if things don't change. If gentrification, which continues, which contributes to homelessness continues, there may come a time when the rents and homeowners of lesser financial endowment may have to move also. Any rate, have a nice day in our emerging globalist world. Relocation is a humane, necessary, and democratic. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Diat Walid?
Good evening, Mayor and councilpeople. My name is Diat Walid. I recently moved from Southeast Bell Avenue because of rent increase, and you'll hear the rest of my story. I am a member of Community Alliance of Tenants. You just heard from the folks from Metro about the great need for affordable housing. I'm one of those statistics. I think it's very important that when we hear about development proposals, that we keep in mind those of us tenants who are affected on a daily basis by those decisions that you make. I'm here to request that you protect Milwaukee tenants by ensuring that we receive relocation assistance when our landlords give us excessive rent increases and no-cause evictions. My partner and I have moved three times in the last four years because-- My partner and I have moved three times in the last four years because of rent increases that are more than we can afford. I'm almost 76 years old, and each move gets increasingly more difficult physically and financially. It's increasingly difficult to find a place to rent in Milwaukee. For our last move, we were caught between not being able to afford the rent increase and also not being able to afford the cost of moving. I'm continuing to work part-time because we can't afford to rent a two-bedroom home on one income. I can't afford to retire. And I know that I'm not alone. In Clackamas County, one in four of us are paying more than half of our income toward rent, leaving too little money left over for food, medicine, and other basics. For every 100 very low-income residents in our county, there are only 19 affordable units. A minimum-wage worker would have to work 93 hours a week to rent a two-bedroom apartment. 93 hours a week. It's just simply not possible. Our last move, a little over a year ago, was because our Milwaukee-area landlord wanted to raise our rent more than 15%. There was no reason for the increase. At the same time, we were asked to raise our rent as a condition of renewing the lease. The same-size apartment in that complex was advertised on Craigslist for several hundred dollars less than what we were then paying. The only reason for the rent increase, apparently, was the greed of the property management owner or the company or the owner. In that complex, our neighbor was evicted even though she had found an agency who could help her pay her back rent. She was a single woman supporting a teenage daughter on part-time work and was a good neighbor. The landlord apparently just wanted her out so they wouldn't have to hear her pleas for understanding of her economic situation. The last time I saw her, she was moving in with a friend because she couldn't find a place to live with her daughter. Milwaukee should be a place where everyone can find a safe, secure, affordable housing at every income level, but unfortunately, that's not true. It's been nearly two years since the City of Milwaukee declared a housing emergency, but we're still seeing double-digit rent increases. I'm tired of moving. I'm tired of trying to find a decent rental that we can afford on one income. I've given up trying to find a place to rent that we could afford on Social Security. I have no idea what we will do if one of us can no longer work. Landlords need to understand that they cannot continue to abuse tenants at will and get away with it. I'm asking you to pass an ordinance for relocation assistance that would protect good, responsible tenants against predatory landlords. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony.
Amy Bruno.
Who do I give my copies to? Good evening, Mayor Gamba and councilors. My name is Amy Bruno. I'm pastor at King of Kings Lutheran Church. I'm here today with the Metropolitan Alliance for the Common Good, MACG, and I urge you to move forward in developing a relocation assistance ordinance that will protect Milwaukee residents, who are renters, from the often devastating impact of forced displacement. We heard earlier and saw some graphs and heard some numbers about housing affordability, and I want to tell a personal story about how those numbers impact people. Even though King of Kings is outside the city boundaries, we have many members who live in Milwaukee city limits, as well as many of our pantry clients, who by and large are renters in Milwaukee and whose rent increases take food from the mouths of their children. So I want to share with you this evening a story of one of our families, Harry and Sharon. They gave me permission to use their names and share their story. Longtime members of our church, 40 years, this coming Easter. They both served on church council and been church custodians, been on many committees. And they moved into an apartment in Milwaukee on Sherry Lane five years ago. They liked their little apartment and their neighbors, and they take care of several of the stray cats that live in their area. Harry works at Willamette View, and Sharon retired to take care of her dad, who passed away two years ago, and she's spent a lot of time dealing with his estate since then. Despite the fact that there's been very little maintenance on the building owned by a woman who lives in another country, in the past two years, their rent has been raised 25%, and in the last two years, $100 a month for those last two years. That's a lot of money. I couldn't afford to do that if my house payment went up that much. This is a struggle for them, and they fear the future, that their rent could be raised again, that it could be raised more than one time in a year, that they would simply be evicted because somebody else is willing to pay more for their apartment, that an eviction on their record would mean that others would be unwilling to rent to them, even if it's a no-cause eviction. And worst of all, that they might have to move farther away from Harry's job, from Harry's parents, who live nearby and require a lot of attention, and away from the church. We need, they're amazing volunteers, and we would really miss them if they had to move far away. So I hope that you'll consider the needs of your most vulnerable citizens, who are renters. I know you care about the vulnerable, and it's time to take action. And I realized that I didn't say the church is off 5501 Southeast Thesen Road. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Charles May.
Good evening. My name is Charles Mays. We own Cambia's Burgers Farm, Casa de Tamales, located here on Main Street. I'm only here to tell the city council that I want to thank you very much for hiring that new parking patrol person by the name of Dave. I would like to see that the city would consider in putting him on full-time instead of part-time because I'm out there watching him give out tickets. I'm watching, we have him parking all through downtown Milwaukee, and I think he's doing a good job. So that's what I came in to see, if you guys could, you know, give him that little raise. I'm sure he's making money for the city, giving those tickets. He's given me a couple of tickets, you know. And so, but anyway, I'm glad to see him out there. I want you to know that. And the other thing is, is as you all well know, our space that we're at over here off of Scott and Main, those five spaces are not going to be torn down as we speak, so that's a good part for the city. So Mr. Halsman, I'm assuming, will have to reapply if he wishes to tear down those buildings. So that's a blessing for the city, that those spaces are going to be there for a while longer. So thank you very much. Have a nice evening and look forward and seeing the good work you guys are doing.
Thanks, Charles.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Charles.
Bernie Stout.
Just one quick, one quick kudos. Hector Campbell Neighborhood, they started the repaving of 42nd Avenue. Yay. They're really working fast. Okay, Bernie Stout, 46, 47, Southeast Ada Lane. The last public meeting on the Monroe Street Greenway Concept Plan was December 1st, 2015. Much of the city council and city staff has changed since then. In a recent Milwaukee pilot, Councilor Beatty stated, "Rest assured that these projects will all be built, but perhaps without some of the features which will make them the special kind of amenities we'd all like to see." At a recent Clackamas County Pedestrian Bike Way Advisory Committee meeting, the discussion of shared-use paths as being physically separated from motor-vehicular traffic with an open space or barrier is a most desirable design. Clackamas County is planning for major mobility improvements from Southeast Fuller Road up Sunnyside Road to Kaiser Hospital, expanding both sides of the overpass at Highway 205 and a path around the college and the swim center to Southeast Sunnybrook Boulevard. The major premise for the Washington Street Route is the hill at 37th going up Monroe to 40th. The Washington Street crossing creates a chaotic confluence of users. On the Monroe Street Greenway Concept Plan internet site are two video tours. The first video starts blocks from the Milwaukee Bay Park at 2606 Southeast Monroe and skips all of Hector Campbell Neighborhood. The second skips most of the hills and seems like a tourism ad for an easy ride. The city of Portland started the Clinton Street Greenway over 30 years ago, with many injured users since then. There continues to be controversial debate about diverters on Southeast Clinton and Southeast Lincoln. Milwaukee has two east-west routes planned, hence this. Southeast Railroad Avenue Multiple Use Path is higher-quality and separated from motorized vehicles. This also would be the best route for natural disaster emergency bike relief workers to get to Kaiser Hospital. The Southeast Monroe Street is better than King Road. Many people say it is best to retain the original simple plan along Southeast Monroe. Several people, including Chris Ordolano, have expressed the desire for two crossings on Southeast 37th. Please watch the city council regular session November 3rd, 2015. Hector Campbell, NDA Chair, outtakes from David Ashenbrenner. People think plans are laws. Plans can be changed. No support for Washington Street, not a full-length, full-on Greenway. The definition of a Greenway is a linear park. Police have more public meetings regarding the Monroe Street Greenway Concept Plan. Those that cannot go up Monroe Street Greenway will have an alternative on Southeast Railroad Avenue Multiple Use Path. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
All right. So this one has Greg, Terry, and Matt on it. So because there's three of you, we're going to go ahead and give you the full nine minutes to do whatever it is you're doing.
Hey. Council, Mayor Gamba, nice to see you all. So the three of us are here because yesterday, I believe it was yesterday, Greg.
Amesonson.
Oh, sorry. Matt Manili, 28th and Lake Road in Milwaukee.
Terry Guyer, Brindell, 5529 Southeast Foxfire in Milwaukee.
I'm the guy that you didn't want to hear from, Greg Hamer, 5822 Southeast Harrison Street.
All right. So I believe yesterday Greg sent two resolutions to you guys. One, asking for a ban on Styrofoam takeout containers, and the second on a plastic bag ban. And I know it's only been probably 24 hours or so since you've seen it, so we're not expecting you to vote on it tonight. We're just basically here to say, please, consider it. And in the coming weeks, we hope that you will actually vote on both of them. They're pretty low-hanging fruit in the grand scheme of things. Portland banned Styrofoam takeout containers in 1990. So it's been 28 years. Just on a broad sweep of businesses in Milwaukee, there's not a lot of people using Styrofoam takeout containers. So the impact on that resolution is relatively small. And I think that's primarily because there's not a lot of Styrofoam takeout containers available at the wholesale level within Portland, since they've made a change a long time ago. That being said, in Clackamas County, you can go into like a cash-and-carry or something like that and buy Styrofoam in large quantities. As somebody who's grown up in Oregon, spent many days fishing and seeing Styrofoam floating down rivers, and knowing that, we all know that plastic and Styrofoam ends up out in the oceans, it breaks down into tiny little microscopic pieces that the fish and other animals eat, and then we eat the fish, so we're consuming plastic and Styrofoam. So I'm going to hand it over to Terry and.
I was going to say that. Save it. So anyway, I have this all written out, and I will read this. We are asking you to pass an ordinance that will ban single-use plastic bags. Why? We think because intelligent, well-meeting human beings don't have the time to examine everything that they do to see if it's harmful to the planet. Plastic bags have become a familiar part of our daily routine, and when given a choice, people will continue to choose to use plastic bags. They're free, they're readily available, they're lightweight, they're waterproof, and why not? After we use them, they can be thrown away or taken to the plastic bag collection site, and everything is good, right? When we become aware of the real consequences of our using plastic bags, we understand that we need to change our ways. It's time to step up, take charge, and make a change. Plastic bags are made from petroleum. They're indestructible. When they're thrown away, they don't go away. They don't biodegrade. They break down into tiny toxic pieces of plastic that sicken or kill living creatures that eat them, and then we eat that, and it gets into us, and we don't want that. Because plastic bags are lightweight, they get blown out of garbage trucks, landfills, public trash cans, they litter our streets, our parks, our trees, and they clog up our sewers. They find their way into waterways that take them to the ocean. There are millions of tons of plastic floating in the ocean right now, all over our planet. Much of that debris is from plastic bags. It is time to stop adding to that toxic waste. The future of recycling plastic bags is looking questionable at this point. We really should not be throwing them away. But according to Waste Management, only 1% of plastic bags are being returned for recycling. The rest ends up in landfills as toxic waste. It's time to stop using plastic bags. Banning single-use plastic bags is a worldwide movement right now, with lots of happy-ending stories. People are doing wonderful things with that. There are alternatives to plastic bags, like bioplastics, reusable bags, and paper bags, readily-available options. Replacing plastic bags with paper bags is not our end goal, but given the choice, paper does biodegrade, and most paper bags are made out of recycled paper, so no new trees are being cut down to make them. The time is right for this council to pass this ordinance. It's time to step up, take charge, and make a change to do the right thing for our city and our planet. Please tell us what we need to do to help you in making this happen.
Now that you heard some of the reasons why we should ban one-time checkout plastic bags and Styrofoam, I would like to offer the justification, besides it's just being the right thing to do. The 2016-adopted vision statement has a super-action entitled "Make Milwaukee a Model of Resilency, Environmental Stewardship, and Disaster Preparedness." In the subcategory Planet 3.1, the vision calls for encourage energy and water efficiency and the use of renewable sources by offering rebates, incentives, and permit fee reduction or waivers. Our group, which many of them are here tonight, as environmental stewards of our community, has prepared two ordinances entitled "Checkout Bag Regulation" and "Poly Styrene Foam Package Regulation." I will not waste your time by reading them here as they were submitted into the public record, but these two ordinances will clean up the garbage in our streets and rivers and increase our recyclable materials with little to no cost to our residences, our businesses, and our city. Because as I heard last night from Ms. Ober, she is very budget-conscious.
That is true.
Our group of environmental stewards is looking forward to direction from Manager Ober, Mayor Gamba, and the city councilors on how to proceed in accomplishing these two worthy ordinances to become a reality. Our group is willing to help in any fashion the city seems fit. We are also happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, as one of the original bag monsters, when Portland passed its ordinance, I applaud this effort. I look forward to working with staff and the council to see what we can make happen. This is not me making a promise, this is my intent, but I need three votes, so I suspect there will be work to do for all of us. So thank you for presenting this.
Yeah, and please keep us informed. Yeah, and please keep us informed, and as we wrote the ordinances, we tried to use the city language that was in them as part of the definitions and to make the work as easy as possible forever, whose responsibility it will be to write them.
Well, and I would say that we also tried pretty hard to size them to Milwaukee, because the last time this was tried in Milwaukee was, the ordinance was really written in a way that wasn't appropriately sized for the businesses of Milwaukee. It was basically a cookie cutter of the Portland ordinance, which had some size restrictions about the businesses that they were going to ban plastic bags from using, and that ordinance didn't really fit Milwaukee's demographic of businesses. So I think we've, quite a few people have taken a look at what you guys have. It's a diverse group of residents, and I think that we did a fairly good job of giving you something that's pretty easy to work with, so I hope you'll take a hard look at it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Greg Bartz-Bowman.
Good evening, City Council. Greg Bartz-Bowman, 10677 Southeast 28th Avenue in Milwaukee. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the plastic bag ban proposal that has been made this evening. I think it's awesome and overdue. In June of 2011, I, along with several other residents, spoke in this room and advocated for a ban on single-use plastic bags. Unfortunately, city council support was lacking, and the proposal swiftly died. I think Mark alluded to, you need three votes. After that meeting, one of our former city councilors pointed out to me that I needed to learn how to count. And so I told him that I would, and tonight I brought a few figures. I learned that 42 million single-use plastic bags have been used in Milwaukee since June of 2011. I've also learned that 85% of the plastic pollution in oceans comes from drainage areas, the mountains to the ocean. 151 cities, from Bethlehem, Washington, to San Diego, California, between the mountains and the ocean, just like Milwaukee, have recognized their obligation to clean this up. These bags are not entering from Nevada. They're coming through our rivers, our streams, going to the ocean, where we have the Pacific Garbage Patch, which is twice the size of Texas, off the coast of California and Hawaii. There's also a similar patch in the Atlantic. So those are just some of the numbers I wanted to share with you since 2011. The things that we missed, the opportunities to keep single-use bags and Styrofoam, which is something we did speak about in 2011 as well. And I guess the last thing I want to point out, and Greg Hammer kind of pointed it out too, but it's the vision statement. First sentence, we will be delightfully livable and completely sustainable. I think plastic bag, a ban on single-use plastic bags and Styrofoam fall under that. In the last sentence, environmental stewardship. Again, to me, this is a no-brainer. I believe it should have been done seven years ago. I feel like we learned to count in this city, and we elected a city council that will do that, and I think the people who are here tonight, who showed up again seven years later, are counting on you to make this happen and happen quickly. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So Denise, I have one for you. Do you...
I can, it has to do with the NMA, is it now or later?
So, basic rules of these kinds of hearings is typically we don't hear testimony for a hearing during the public testimony portion during this audience participation part. However, tonight, because we're not going to be hearing any new information from staff, we were planning to begin deliberations.
Okay, I can speak now.
Like I said, we don't typically...
Okay, I'll speak to the vision of Milwaukee, how's that?
Mr. Mayor, we would need to, if the testimony is applicable to the ordinance, that would need to be part of the land use record, so we would need to make sure that goes into the record. So if there is going to be testimony on that, and I know the council's preference is to not accept testimony, but if there is, it would need to be during the ordinance portion of the meeting, so it can be reflected in the record. And I can indicate there's no, you know, at this point, the council's heard testimony, lots of testimony...
Yeah.
And is prepared to deliberate and discuss with staff, and that's, from a legal standpoint, perfectly acceptable.
Yeah, I think we've heard from you twice before, and you've written us all very heartfelt letters. I think we have...
I would like to go on record to speak for housing, then. May I speak about affordable housing?
Sure.
Bye. I apologize, I have my service dog and an emotional sport dog in training, so my friend is here to help. Thank you.
Denise, I'm Merling Baker, and I live in the Historic Downtown Neighborhood Association. And you heard tonight from Metro that there is an emergency in housing, and you've also stated that, and one of their goals was to diversify, to find diversity and an increase in housing. And I think, and I want to applaud you for looking at new zoning that includes some mixed-use areas to increase housing, and I want to go on record for saying that I certainly hope that you will, you will listen to the developers who have funding to build some diverse housing in our area who have committed to, to offering some of that housing as affordable housing, because we need it so badly right now. So I want to thank you for listening to that testimony, and appreciate that you have read the emails I've sent as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, those are all the cards I have. So we are to the hearing, yes?
Yes.
Yes. All right, so, North Milwaukee Industrial Area Comprehensive Plan Zoning Code Amendments and Ordinance, continued from February 20th, 2018. The public hearing on North Milwaukee Industrial Area Plan and Code Amendments, file numbers CPA-2017-002 and ZA-2017-003, is called to order. We are here tonight for the council to deliberate on the record we now have. Does any member of council wish to announce an actual or potential conflict of interest?
No.
No. Does any member of the audience have any objection to council's jurisdictions to consider this matter? Seeing none, does any member of the audience have any objections to the council's participation in this hearing? Also seeing none. The staff will now present the questions that will frame our deliberations.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. And we'll bring up the slide with the questions for your deliberation this evening.
I re-enabled it, so scroll down to RS 5A, presentation. There you go. That looks really brown. It is really brown. It's no way, but...
Counsel, this slide summarizes the various questions for the, for your deliberation discussing the Millport Mixed Use Overlay. I'll just walk through, and then I will walk away, let you talk about them. But the question starts regarding the Mill End Store, and does council want to allow the Mill End Store or another fabric store, of course, or similar, to rebuild on the existing site? If your answer is yes, then we have a follow-up question. Should it be permitted, be a permitted use as part of the actual overlay itself, or should it be a use that's only permitted on that existing site? And we can, we can write language to reflect that. So we're really asking about, do we want the overlay that would allow that Mill End Store, or are we making this a very site-specific, kind of grandfathering sort of situation within the NME? So we're really sort of asking about the overlay itself. As we move forward, or down the list of questions, now we're on to sort of the residential question, and does the council wish to allow upper-floor residential uses within the mixed-use overlay? If not, we'll sort of go over, if there isn't any residential, we're back to, do we want to grandfather the fabric store within the NME? Do we want to impose any special standards or design standards or construction standards on that? If we do want to permit, if the council chooses to permit a residential in the overlay, should there be a sunset provision? And what should that length of time be if you do think a sunset provision is appropriate? And again, a sunset provision would be something that would permit the overlay to exist for a certain amount of time, and we have code language within the proposed code that you've been reviewing that talks about sort of what triggers that, that overlay provision, beyond which then the overlay goes away. If something was built within that overlay, it stays, and it's a permitted use within that overlay. But if you didn't, if someone didn't take advantage of that overlay provision within that sunset period, then it would, it would eventually go away if you want to, if you want to include a sunset provision. And then as we move down, are there other applicable standards that the council might want to consider requiring as part of development within the overlay? Some suggestions might be requiring affordable housing, requiring green building standards, expanding the resource protection area along Johnson Creek. That's something that's been discussed at a couple of different hearings. Is there a reuse or a construction standard in order to facilitate reuse of a building? So a clear, a minimum clear height on the first floor of a building. So these are some of the things that we would ask that council think about as you deliberate, whether or not there should be an overlay, whether or not there should be residential within that overlay, whether or not we should be permitting the existing fabric store or similar use within an overlay or in the NME. So I hope that kind of clarifies sort of this range of questions for you. I'm happy to explain more or clarify, but otherwise, the floor is yours.
So, I mean, we've kind of danced around this idea that it's a, it's not, we're not saying the Mill End Store, we're saying a large fabric store.
Bookie fabric retail.
Can we not say just the Mill End Store? I mean, if we write it...
We'd be creating a use that describes that store, but by name...
But then so Joanne's Fabric could come in and want to do the same thing.
Yes, yes.
Well, would you do the same thing depending on where the overlay is and if there's space?
Sure, sure, sure. But I mean, yeah, so that plays into the, right, that plays into the question about site-specific or...
That's right.
Or broader, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So we're not, I mean, just legally, we can't say, "You, you business, you can rebuild, but nothing else?" I mean, I'm not saying that's what we want to do, but it is a legal matter, can we?
Well, what we would be doing is essentially making that a permitted use, but if the, and it happens to be the Mill End Store now, right? But if 25 years from now, or whenever it closed, that use is what is grandfathered, it's not that business that's grandfathered. So we do have a similar provision in the code, in the proposed code regarding waste management uses. And so we've grandfathered the existing A, an existing waste management use. Going forward, a new one would need to go through a conditional use review. So that's the way we can do that without naming the specific business, it's the use itself that's grandfathered. And so we're proposing this, or we're asking the question, but framing it in a similar fashion for this as well.
Any other clarifying questions right now?
On the 24-foot minimum clearance, what is it right now?
So we don't have a minimum, no, we don't. The proposed code on the key streets would require a minimum first floor of 14 feet. That's what we have in the downtown, that provides flexibility for a more, for office, retail, restaurant, that kind of, that kind of use. What we were thinking about in requiring a higher clear height would be to provide more industrial or manufacturing reuse opportunities. That clear height standard, right now, the New York Building, as an example, has clear heights between 13 and 14 feet. I talked to the general manager of the building yesterday. That building was built more for light industrial. There is room for racking, but it's not for the kinds of users that need really high clearances for machinery or really high sections of racks or that sort of thing. I looked on LoopNet yesterday just to see what kind of space is available right now, just so I could get a sense of what's in, either in the International Way area or in the NMA. And there are spaces, not very many to be honest, but spaces that are available right now with clear heights between 13 and 24 feet. So we do have a wide, a wide range, but the clear, the higher clear height has more adaptability for more manufacturing and industrial users that need higher ceilings for their equipment, higher racks for more warehousing opportunities. So it does provide some more flexibility for those kinds of uses, but, but somewhere in that, that 22 to 24 clear foot clear height is more for the more industrial manufacturing or for the more warehousing-intensive types of uses. Just want to give you some perspective on the heights.
But the number that had been kicked around before was 20 feet.
20 feet, I believe what was mentioned by the property owner or by the architect that had provided those drawings for the Mill End Store site, was, I think what he had mentioned was 20 feet was what he would have, or he would be proposing. So that's certainly in the range of what we're talking about, yeah.
Had that, had that number been, the 24 feet, had that been in the original staff report, or did that develop over time during the public hearing testimony?
That developed over time, yeah.
And did staff have a recommendation on what the minimum should be, if any?
What we were looking for, what we had mentioned was that that 14 feet is what would be required in the MUTSA. The question to council was just understanding that should, almost thinking about, well, what hap, what if down the road, something rebuilds on this site? You know, we have the 60,000-square-foot space, and the Mill End Store should close for whatever reason. Do we want, is it something to think about, what kind of flexibility might we want in order to encourage more manufacturing or industrial uses? So we raised the question, pointing out with that 14-foot ceiling height, which doesn't mean no industrial, certainly light industrial, light manufacturing can happen, but a higher ceiling height. But we didn't mention 24, we just raised the question that the 14 sort of creates, that's, creates a ceiling of, no pun intended, of what could, what could happen in that space. And a taller ceiling height might provide more flexibility. And then the architect, I think it was Jerry Basinger, had mentioned that 20 feet was what he would have, he would be proposing as part of that design when he submitted that design to council at the last hearing.
If we set the 24 minimum, does, you're saying that creates more flexibility?
Well, it provides for more, more, certainly not everyone wants that kind of height either. So it's really, we're really thinking about what kinds of uses do we want to make sure have space in there? But it, it could, that high of a clear height could, you know, lead us into a direction of really only warehousing or heavy manufacturing. So, you know, maybe the answer is somewhere between 14 and 24, maybe it's not 24, but maybe it's not 14 either. And maybe that 20-foot clear height that Jerry Basinger had mentioned is a reasonable compromise that still provides that racking space for retail uses, but would provide something more than the 14 feet, so there was more industrial flexibility there as well. It's a good question, so thank you for asking it.
So, one thing I'm not sure of, so help me out.
Sure.
In what, the questions, the way they're posed right now, and, and, you know, you go from A to B and yes or no or whatever.
Yeah.
That doesn't necessarily make fabric stores or the Mill End Store, whichever way you want to look at it, a permitted use, it's still a conditional use?
No, we have square footage limitations in the Mutza right now, and so kind of the way this overlay is, was originally proposed was that the overlay would apply the Mutza zoning to this area without the standalone residential. That's kind of how it came to you from the, from the Planning Commission. So some additional language would be, would be needed in order to grandfather, you know, the existing, I actually, I think that the...
Grandfather it in, would it, but it, would it still be a conditional use?
No, it would grandfather their use as, it would, as a, and that would allow them to rebuild, yes.
So if it's years in the future, 20, 25, whatever?
Right. Right.
Anything could go on that site?
If it were in the list of permitted uses.
If it were in the list of...
Right, right, yeah.
So could a big box go there?
The way we were proposing to write it was to limit it to that, you know, that bulky fabric retail so that it wouldn't be, I mean, big box is, you know, it's a big square building, but it's not kind of, you know, Best Buy and, you know, all these other things. It was intended to be fairly narrowly focused to this type of retail use, yeah.
Any more questions? So I have a technical question for our attorney. If I go to the next step where I close the public hearing and then a question arises for staff, we can still reach out to staff and ask it, yes?
Just reopen the hearing and discuss, for discussion with staff.
Okay. All right, well, if there are no further questions from council, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard? The public testimony portion of the public hearing on the North Milwaukee Industrial Area Plan and Code Amendments, file numbers CPA-2017-ZilZil2 and ZA-2017-ZilZil3 is hereby Is there any council discussion? So basically, our, our concept here is to work down through this chart and, and answer questions and depending on whether it's a yes or no, we move one direction or another. So the first question is, do we want the, to allow the Mill End store to rebuild as a bulky fabric retailer of that size? Should the floods come or a fire or something else like that?
And if yes, should it be just done that?
Well, let's start with...
This would allow even with, even if not a flood.
Yeah, so I was wanting to make that clear because they can already do that, right?
Right.
So this question goes more to, could they just tear it down next week and rebuild if they wanted?
True, that is true.
I haven't heard anybody say no to that question in this, in any of our, I haven't, I haven't had any indication of anybody saying no to that question.
Well, and I think all along, we've indicated that one of the reasons we're meeting so much and talking so much about it and listening to so much testimony and trying to make decisions is because we value the Mill End store and we're trying to find a, a resolution for that. So yes, we should allow it to rebuild.
I do have concerns about buttoning it up, making sure the language is specific enough that, that maybe we could even prevent just some national brand that comes in and buys up the Mill End store and maybe thousands of others across the country. And then we're no longer saving the Mill End store. We've just simply invited a big box, which is not in line with what folks wanted for this area.
And we do have some language for you tonight, if you're interested in seeing that. And if you want to make amendments tonight, you can do that as well.
I wouldn't disagree with, with that concept of, of really tightly limiting it to Mill End store somehow, however that language ends up being. So that's five of us saying yes. So then the next question. Should we allow upper-floor residential?
Whoa, wait a minute. Isn't part of the next question, should it be permitted or should it be on that site only?
That's right, sorry. I was skipping ahead, so.
So I think one of the things that preserves the Mill End store and the integrity of an employment area is that it be on that site only. The site that currently is occupied by the Mill End store and its parking lot, that little triangular piece, not that entire southern area.
Well, I would say by limiting it to that, we do help button it up if that's the goal.
Exactly, right.
If it's not to help, not to help somebody, not to open the door for somebody else to come in with another one.
Exactly.
On another parcel. So, I mean, I can see...
Well, so I, just to play devil's advocate, and I'm not necessarily advocating for this, but should they want to move it up to, say, where the Pendleton building is right now?
That was my very thought.
Have the same question, would we not allow that?
That's a whole new thought that's never been expressed before.
No, I expressed exactly that thought when I was asking where they were going to relocate during, during rebuilding.
Aren't we talking about an overlay in that southern area, having mixed use in the other parts of the...
This is just as...
Just for the overlay.
Is not what we've discussed before.
So the only difference between this, if I'm recalling all the code correctly, and what currently, what we're currently thinking about putting on the Pendleton site, for example, is the size of the retail. So you could do retail up there, you just can't do this big of retail.
I see.
Correct?
Planning, yes.
But I mean, the difference, the limit is considerably less.
It's considerable, yes, yes. But that's, that's the question I'm asking because I could, I could imagine that being something that happens, that they go, okay, Pendleton store no longer makes sense to us, but we really want to keep the Mill End store and we're wanting to attract the people to get off the light rail, or I don't know.
But I think too, the question before us is, the Mill End store is concerned because they're in a flood plain and there are other restrictions. And they want to be able to rebuild the Mill End store. And, and what's been looked at so far is that southern area, albeit larger than, you know, what we're talking about at this point in time. But, you know, there's, it's a whole new ballgame to talk about anything being anywhere else, in my opinion.
I agree with Wilda. For me, it was site-specific for the reasons that Wilda just stated.
For that size.
For that size.
So if they wanted to downsize.
For that developer and that owner and that site.
What's the largest retail that's currently allowed?
20.
Come on up to the...
You can find it in here, I'm pretty sure it's 20.
Let's see, how do I?
You can just ask if, if there's any objection to reopening the hearing.
Okay, thanks. Is there any objection to reopening the hearing to ask this question?
No.
All right, it is reopened.
Actually, the current code in the, in the area of, in the sub-area two, or sub-area one, sorry, where the Pendleton store is located right now, the current code allows for retail up to 60,000 square feet.
And this is currently how big?
60,000 square feet.
The Mill End store is only 60,000?
The Mill End store.
Oh.
The proposed code, just to close the door on that, the proposed code reduces the maximum size of retail in the MUTSA to 20,000 square feet.
So a third?
Correct.
That's, that's what I meant by my question.
Right, I just wanted to kind of, yeah.
Give us the history there.
That's right, yes, yeah.
That was very thorough. All right, so do I hear a motion?
Move to close the public testimony.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to close public testimony. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public testimony is closed. Do I need to reread the whole song and dance about? Thank you. Okay, so we have that question answered, that they would have to downsize to one-third of current size with the new code that we are proposing for the Mutza. Or no, yeah, Mutza, that's what it's called.
If they were to move...
If they were to move up to the Pendleton.
Right.
Which they've kind of made a point of saying that that's a different owner, you know, they got us a letter from a different owner.
Right.
It's a different family member or whatever, so we don't have any reason to think that's on the table, you know?
I agree.
Well, and part of the reason I'm interested in this question is that should they decide to rebuild with or without housing, that business is going to have to be somewhere for two years.
Right.
And a kind of logical place for that to be is the Pendleton site. So this, this is part of my reasoning on...
But I believe they also said that they knew they were going to need to do that if they were going to rebuild and that they had other properties where they could move to. They've already been thinking about that.
Yeah, I know.
So, yeah, they have a plan.
Okay, so I've got two noes that don't seem to be wavering.
Two noes on what?
On moving, on being allowed on this use being permitted anywhere else in the...
Well, I want to be sure what we're talking about. Not, not that whole southern area that's been shown to us to make that an overlay, but the site currently occupied by the Mill End store and its parking area. I mean, I guess that's the best way to say that.
Yes, the existing site.
That's the area that...
That's the only area that you...
That I would want the overlay on.
On the overlay, okay, so.
I'm in agreement with that. I mean, I, I'm kind of a little bit on the fence, but I'm really worried about, you know, creating opportu, you know, unintended consequences of creating opportunities for other businesses. So, yeah, I'm kind of on board with that.
I just, I just want to make sure that I understand what you said because you're not suggesting that the overlay, that the Millport overlay is only site-specific. So I don't think we talked about that. And we're still talking about the larger triangle for the overlay. You're just talking about specifically the use.
The overlay would permit the housing and if we did an overlay, likes up in the north, the Mutza, it would permit housing on the whole thing. It would permit larger sites on the whole thing. It would, you know, whatever. No, what I'm talking about is if, if the Mill End store, which is what we've been tasked with considering, so if the Mill End store needed to, wanted to, determined to rebuild in whatever configuration, because we haven't gotten to that point, that, that is the site that they could rebuild on because that would be the only part of it that's not just NME. Are my initials right?
NME, yeah, yeah.
You know, right? The rest of it remains what it is in the new...
Then I guess, then for me, that actually reverses the questions. The residential portion for me almost comes before that question. Because if other folks are, are considering residential on just one site, to me, that's, that's, that, that doesn't, that does not create successful housing for, for anyone who might happen to live on that site. If the rest of it can remain...
So, do you mean...
So you're talking about keeping, keeping the overlay, keeping that use in the whole triangle there?
No, see, I thought these were, I thought we were actually carving out the use to just the site potentially. But the rest of the overlay was for the whole overlay. But that's not what I hear you saying.
Right, what they've asked for is the overlay to be on that whole piece, which would permit housing. And I'm saying I could support Mill End being able to rebuild if it's on the site that they're currently on without having discussion about the housing at this point in time.
Disconnected from the housing.
Disconnected from the housing.
Okay.
But you may possibly be right. If we're talking about the housing, then, you know, like, which came first, the chicken or the egg? I mean, I don't...
No, but I think, I think that clarification is okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, yes, they are allowed to rebuild, but no, not anywhere else in the industrial area except the site they currently are in.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Now, allowing upper-floor residential through the NMU.
So in the bigger overlay zone?
In that overlay, that triangled overlay zone south of...
Or maybe because we've said, because we've answered the first question, no, we're, yeah, we're asking...
So there's, that's an option in the answer of this question is we could say we're only going to allow housing.
On the Mill End site?
On the Mill End site. Or we can say we're going to allow housing in that full triangle south of...
Millport.
Millport, thank you.
So the, to me, the only issue we're dealing with right at this point in time is whether or not to permit that on the Mill End site.
And you can ask...
Especially if we're not putting the overlay on the whole area.
I mean, we could say that the Mill End store has to stay where the Mill End store. That doesn't necessarily preclude the overlay for residential from being in that whole triangle. It's, it's irrelevant.
So we'd be making that whole southern area mixed use where almost any kind of business that's in our long list of, including housing of whatever kind and any kind could go in there.
Well, that remains to be seen. You know, we, we are still talking about the possibility of, of limiting the kinds of housing of a lot of things, so it's just the simple question of, do we want to allow upper-floor residential? And the answer to that could be yes, under very strict, within this very strict box of guidelines. Or it could be no, we only want to allow it over the Willen Mill. Or it could be no, period. Those are all options. Right? If I start to go off the rails, let me know.
Right.
Okay, so any, I'm, I am prepared to speak on this, but I'm happy to hear any of you
I'm also prepared to speak. Happy to let someone go first.
Go ahead.
I have not been super happy with the process that we've gone through because I feel like we had stakeholder meetings, we had consultants, we had a lot of outreach, and residential was not wanted in that area. And then we had a wealthy property owner come forward, spend a lot of money on experts and consultants and send a lot of people front to this desk to testify. So I'm not real happy with the way the process has turned out. At the same time, Mill End store is an important part of the Milwaukee history. I don't like spot zoning. I don't like planning long-term for our city based on one business. That's poor urban planning, in my opinion. We've also talked about the reasons we wouldn't have residential because of the conflict that it creates, the encroachment, the potential to lose our industrial lands. We don't have a lot of industrial lands already. And so there are a lot of reasons why I'm very much against residential. At the same time, we also have had discussions about how important housing is in our city and the need for that. I would be prepared to allow residential with some very strict guidelines, including green buildings of the highest standard, affordable housing. I don't know what the right percentage is of that, but I think it should be included. This property owner spoke to that, said that he was willing to do affordable housing, said he was going to do a green building. And I also would want as much protection as we legally can get out of it for Johnson Creek. So those would be my three rails that I would put on it if we were to move forward with residential.
And would you do it only on the Mill End site or over the whole overlay?
I don't think it makes sense to have one, one little spot surrounded completely by industrial. So if I'm going to do it, I would do it for the entire quadrant, that entire southeast, southwest quadrant. And I think that's what Angel was saying earlier as well.
But it wasn't in my thinking at this point. That is not in my thinking. I would agree with the caveats of affordable housing, green building, you know, those, those types of things. But I'm still concerned about putting the opportunity for more and other kinds of housing into a jobs-generation area. That's what, that's why we studied it in the first place, how to increase the density of jobs in that area. And now we're talking about taking a large, larger piece of it and permitting other kinds of, of uses.
I'm, I'm with Wilda on that. Another way I'm disappointed in the process and the way this played out is I don't think the questions of the viability of office on that location was properly vetted at Planning Commission. I think Planning Commission was faced with that Echo Northwest report and it kind of skewed their thinking of the whole site and it made them assume that office didn't work. I think we have, you know, better information now that office could be... I think we have, you know, better information now that office could be, could be workable and certainly in the next couple of years could be more, more, you know, financially feasible. So, I'm not inclined to allow residential at all. I think, you know, market conditions change. If the, if the Milland store gets flooded in seven years and, and the office market has fallen through the roof, then they can come back and ask for a rezone for residential at that point. But I think right now, there's, I don't see, I don't see changing the whole character of the west side of McLaughlin to allow.
Okay.
Sounds like home.
What did I say?
Whatever it was, the dogs didn't like it.
It's been an evening, hasn't it?
So, anyway, that...
But Lisa, are you, are you saying that, that you, you would, if it were just on the Mill, if housing were just on the Milland site, that you would be supportive of that or that you wouldn't be supportive of any housing?
No housing. No housing.
I'm disappointed in the process along the same lines that Counselor Abma, you mentioned. I think the, I don't think enough respect was paid during, during sort of the public hearing process of this, of this year-long plus process of the NMIA and gathering public input. I just want to reiterate that there were hundreds of responses and the majority came out on, against housing in, in this area, that housing should be focused at the Tacoma Station area. And so, I think that to, to, we talk about this all the time, about public engagement and making sure that we can meet people where they are and, and people can provide input in a variety of ways, and those voices are counted equally, that just because you have a lot of money or you, or you have the time to come here at this late hour and provide testimony, that to me is not, we need to make good on our promise to hear and value the voices where, where we get them. And I think that we, what we've been asked to do is to completely disregard hundreds of voices and at the request of, of a handful, we've, we've heard from the same people at, at all of the hearings through the Planning Commission and here at, at both of our hearings. And I don't think that that respects the process, so I'm very disappointed in that. I also don't think that we, in what we've been presented with, I don't think that we've really done enough around Chapter Three of the plan, of the framework, which was around the ECO district. I don't think that we've done, there, as far as I could tell, there was no conversation about broadening, you know, protection of Johnson Creek anywhere. And so, certainly if, if the majority of council is thinking we'd go down that road, I absolutely support that. I also don't think I got an answer to that question. How much are we legally able to do without litigation? That was my question. I don't have an answer to that yet, so I think that that needs more exploring. So, I'm, I don't know that I'm really prepared actually to make, to, to make my decision yet, and I don't know that I will be tonight.
So, I came into this process pretty agnostic about, about the concept of housing in that spot. On the one hand, yes, it is at the southern end of our industrial area. On the other hand, I believe that industrial uses are going to change over the next half a century, and it's, and are very likely to be less conflicted with, with residential. That triangle sits right next to other residential. So, as the crow flies or the diesel smoke drifts, it is really not much more at risk for angry residents than, than the homes, very expensive homes that abut it on the west.
Well, except it just expands...
Sure.
The people who are within the...
Sure, but...
The noise, whatever.
So, as I said, I'm, I was agnostic coming into, into the process. I agree that what we heard through the original work with the consultant and the outreach was that housing wasn't desired in this area. I will say, having been part of that, however, it was never really presented in, I'm going to be, I want to be really careful about how I say this. You know, you can ask a question, you can ask a question, and it was never really presented in a way that might cause you to go, huh, yeah, that, I could see that working. It was always presented in a way that kind of led you to, yeah, it's a bad idea to put housing in an industrial area. And I think as a general rule of thumb, it's a bad idea to put housing in an industrial area. But as I said before, I think industrial is going to change, and I would frankly, as part of this process, kind of like to change the name of that to what...
Well, it has been.
What Angel suggested months ago to the North Milwaukee Innovation Area, because I believe that is the future of jobs.
Well, yeah.
If we want the density of jobs, if we want good-paying jobs, it's, it's by and large not going to be new, new industrial uses, the way we think of industrial uses, the smokestacks, the, it's going to be things that we haven't even heard of yet. I think, I think for a very long time, we're going to have good industrial uses like Mr. Johnson's process in, in the north area that are going to stay in this area because of the product that they... Anderson, sorry.
Anderson.
Yeah. I'm like, wait a minute, is that a different person?
Thank you, everyone. I'm horrible remembering names, particularly when I'm ranting. Mr. Anderson's pots, I think that's, those are the kinds of uses we're going to continue to, to see in our industrial area. But I think the new uses that come in could look very different and, and may well not be in conflict with housing.
But the conflict isn't just with the refrigeration trucks that are running outside of this area. It's, it's also the conflicts, the conflict is the, the economic pressure that it puts onto the area. Once it becomes housing, it will all be, it, the pressure to become housing and for that encroachment, you don't get rents of $150 a square foot out of office space, right? But that's what, that's what residential will, will attract. And so, more and, more and more businesses are going to be looking to, to make, I mean, they're, they're businesses, they're, they're operating to, to generate a profit and they're going to go for, you know, they're going to ask for the highest zoning that will allow the highest amount of profit.
Yeah. This is, this is going to sound really way out, so just bear with me and help me with this, so. If we were to permit, I mean, we already said, yeah, we would permit Milland store to rebuild and whatever, so let's move on to the next step. If we were to permit housing above retail on the Milland site, it could certainly serve as a model, if you would, or a how's it going to work kind of, you know, fixture, to see if in fact those two can coexist sufficiently so that it does promote the kind of area and the kind of community that, you know, that we'd like. I mean, if, if I, if I had to put housing on that site, another caveat that I personally would like to see, but I realize that things are market-driven, is that, so if, it's my understanding, it would be a podium building, and so then the Milland store would be the first story. I would think that in that area, having a second story that is not labeled office but is, you know, creative, maker space, flex space, you know, something like that, and then three stories of residential, you know, if, if, if I had to develop something that had residential on it on that space, I mean, that would, that would be kind of my optimum.
What about live-work?
Live-work, same thing, yes, yeah.
What, I mean, requiring it...
Throughout the building.
Live-work.
Yeah.
You mean that no one can...
Well, we have...
What does that mean to you?
So, we have live-work spaces right across the street here.
North Main.
And many of them don't use the space as work. What it, what it means, to me at least, is what I imagined when we toured the New York building, and they talked about how there were people that wanted some of those spaces with the high ceilings, with the industrial elevator, with all those kinds of amenities, wanted to be able to live in their space and also to do their startup business in their space. And so, building a building, and this is, this is exactly what I think more of the future is going to look like.
Yeah.
Is, is things like that, where you get people living and working in a, in a space. I mean, that, when I lived in New York, that was really common. I had a, I had a loft space, you know? I had my photography studio in the front, and I had my apartment in the back, same, same space. And it was really common there. And I think, I think particularly Portland area with its sort of artsy, maker space, creative vibe is, is prime for places like that, so.
I do too.
I don't, I don't know how you would, how you would codify that, what that would look like. I think that's something that could be looked into, but I liked that idea of, of saying it's got to be designed in such a way that it's not a little 600-square-foot apartment with bathroom sink, you know? It's got to be designed in such a way that it could be a live-work space. And I think that again goes back to its, you know, its employment. It's bringing industry, it's bringing economic development...
Right.
Into our city.
And it's bringing a lot of other movement into that area, which will then support some of the other, you know, more, the amenities that build up around it that help serve all the people that work in that area. I mean, if you, if you worked there or lived there, you'd want to at least be able to go get a cup of coffee somewhere or have lunch somewhere. Right now, you can't do any of that. You've got to leave the area to do, you know, to do anything. So, I think that's one of our goals overall, is that there are more of those day-to-day amenities that are, are within that, but...
Well, that was the other...
If I had my druthers and I built a building, that's how I built it.
One of the other goal, I mean, one of the other goals was how do we increase the number of jobs? And so, if we're...
Yeah, that was the major.
Even if we're only looking at this specific site, if, if we just simply allow the rebuilding of the Milland store, we're not adding any job density there.
Right, exactly.
And even if we allow residential, we're still not adding any additional jobs there. But if there was, if the residential is built such that it is a work, live-work design, then, and I, I don't know, could, I mean, if, if, I have a question about, I'm sorry, but the affordable housing and/or, or, or requiring it to be live-work, I, I mean, aren't there some, there's some guardrails around what we're even allowed to do with requiring affordable housing?
Anybody have any objection to reopening? No. No.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff, please, come on up. Wade into this morass with us.
So, it sounds like we're talking about inclusionary zoning as part of this...
Potentially.
Potentially, right?
Potentially a pure live-work building, or potentially, we're just wanting to know, are there rails around requirements that state, you know, based on state code that, or I guess metro, I don't even know metro, but state code that might keep us from doing something like that?
I would, I don't know the answer to the inclusionary zoning question off the top my head, as far as I know what it was back east. I don't know how it works here, so...
Well, we could pass inclusionary zoning here, and we could cause 20%, I think, 10%, 20%, whatever.
Don't we have to offer some, some offsets?
Yes, we do.
And, I mean, so it's not just a matter of, there's a whole lot that goes into this. It's not a simple...
Density bonus, there's incentives that have to kind of match that, right? Okay. I can certainly come back with all of that, you know, for you, for sure. As far as the live-work piece of it goes, so live-work isn't allowed residential use in the, in the proposed code in the Mutza. Requiring it as part of this site, this overlay, what have you, we're already sort of going down that road by not allowing standalone residential, so we're sort of already in that. Our code for live-work is pretty specifically, it's defined in a certain way, and it's described in a very certain way in the code as far as how it's designed.
Can you read it to us?
I can.
Thank you.
Because I, you know, the loft space, you know, the way you're describing that...
It's really intended more for row house kind of thing.
It's kind of, it's sort of like what we have on Harrison. Yeah, exactly.
We would end up, if we were going in the direction that I was talking about, that sort of loft space thing, we would have to end up writing new...
Well, we'd have to define...
Brand new definitions and...
Yeah, we'd have to either call it something else and define it in a very specific way and not call it live-work, so it doesn't get tied back to our actual live-work code. And look, we're already in it. I mean, you know, might as well, right? But the, so the development standards, I think this is maybe a better, where I would throw this to you. So, the non-residential portion of a unit has to occupy at least 25% of the gross floor area. That's, we can get there, I think. The non-residential portion, this is the part that gets tricky, the non-residential portion of the building shall be located on the ground floor, and the residential unit shall be located on the upper floors or to the rear of the non-residential portion. So, that's where you end up with the townhouse, the row house kind of development, right? So, we could think about a different way of describing what we're trying to create and not call it our live-work. You know, we, we limit the number of, you know, how many, you know, the owner of the unit has to work there. I mean, you can't just own it and not work there. We have, you know, the, a limit to the number of employees, so there's a, it's really intended to be kind of a smaller situation. But that development standard number two is the one that forces you into that townhouse kind of style of development, yeah.
So, philosophically, when we went into this whole thing way back, I mean, conceptually, the idea was to sort of open up the zoning and allow for new innovative uses, allow for broadening of the spectrum of the kinds of businesses and the way businesses could layer and interact. To me, this is in that spectrum. It just, it's, it's the outer edge, no doubt, of that spectrum, but it is in that spectrum. And if it's possible to get there somehow, to, this is, I think this is a really great idea. I think this actually does what we specifically set out to do in the industrial area, which is to add job density. So, if you're creating spaces that specifically allow people to come in and create their own small businesses or have a good, a well-functioning small business, a photographer studio is a classic example of the way that has happened for a century. But there's lots and lots of other people that do very similar things, and those kinds of spaces are hard to find. I mean, the Pearl used to be full of them. If you used to, back when I moved to Oregon, I had lots of friends in the Pearl that had these great old sections of warehouse spaces with 14, 18-foot ceilings, and they weren't huge, they were maybe the size of this room, but they were doing really cool things in there. And of course, they're all priced out.
Yeah.
It's all gone. So, I, I can imagine there would be a market for spaces like this, and it would fit very nicely with, with our industrial area.
So, we would just need to come up with a different name for it?
Yeah.
Because that's not going to work.
No.
And we're not going to fix that.
Well, it seems to me you have a definitional issue in terms of, yeah, there's more than just a name, it's a, how you define, so that the, I mean, what you're describing, the residential is incidental to other use, the residential isn't really the primary use, it sounds to me, so how do you, how do you decide?
But this, this part of the conversation started with what I said was my vision, and my vision still has three floors of residential if, you know, if that's what we end up doing.
Over maker space.
Over maker space, over retail, over parking on a pedestal, in the pedestal thing, right? Yeah.
Yeah, and I just don't think that that gets us, it doesn't, it doesn't actually get us to the, to the... us to the goal of more jobs. So, three floors of...
Gives us another floor.
It gives it floor of makerspace, or live-work, or whatever. Flex space, makerspace, live-work space.
So, requiring a second floor of...
A floor or two of the loft, nouveau loft, and then straight-up residential could be about that.
Why don't you get all the way up?
I'm just, I'm just...
We, I just wanted to introduce that Dan actually had some comments on this, and I think they might be useful since we're open and staff level.
Okay, thanks.
Talking a little bit over here, I think, I think the concept that Vera talked about is very doable, and what you're looking at, and I think what you're starting to talk about now, is not so much changing that concept radically, but changing the design elements of that concept. So, you still would be an owner-occupied, so the primary use would be the industrial or commercial use, and the residential would be allowed as part of that use by the owner? Is that...
Well, so, I'm not imagining owner-occupied, because I'm imagining these being rentable spaces.
Yeah, not owned.
And secondarily, I wouldn't even imagine that it would be the max, when we didn't even do that here. So, if you go, and I've been in these buildings right across the street, the retail portion or the business portion of those units is very small. It's certainly not...
It's not 25%.
More than the residential. The residential is another two whole floors, whereas the business portion of that is just the front end behind the garage. So, you've got garage, you've got a little bit of the business space, and then upstairs, you have two floors of residential. So, at most, it's a quarter, but I wouldn't even guess that. I'd say it's probably more like 15%.
The places that you recall in the Pearl District, those loft spaces, they could either be office, or they could be residential, you know, they were, or they could be both, you know, so, and I would, I would think that the way, we couldn't mandate both, or one, or the other here, I don't think, without it getting really complicated.
Yeah.
I mean, I think what you'd do, as Dan had just suggested, was you would make sure the design could accommodate that mix there. So, I'm not 100% certain how to do it, but it would be about, like, a unit size, it would be about a ceiling height, it would be different than, you know, saying that, saying that it is a mixed-use space where someone is conducting a business and living. I find that, I find that would be really hard to enforce, among other things.
Right.
So, you know, I think it's more creating that opportunity for that use to happen.
And in essence, that's what the spaces in the Pearl and the spaces in New York City all did. It was just a rental unit. You could rent it, and you could do whatever you wanted to do. What it didn't have was limitations that you couldn't do, okay, max, and you couldn't do why.
There you go.
You could do whatever, you know, you wanted. But the spaces were conducive to other, to having businesses in there, and the kind of people that just wanted an apartment wouldn't rent them, because they were a little more expensive, or a lot more expensive.
Well, I'm imagining that they wouldn't be more expensive. I'm imagining that they would actually be a little bit less expensive, because they're...
By virtue of the fact that they're going to be bigger than your average 700-square-foot apartment.
But what if the design, so, okay, so, I'm trying, I want to make sure I'm, so, if we can enforce design standards, and I like the idea of just naming it something else, because we're thinking about something new, so loft-work space, and we put in some standards that require that they have freight elevator access, or certain other design standards that would be very unattractive to a typical, just standalone residential use.
But would be really attractive to a certain demographic that exactly wants to be able to tinker or build or create a business.
In that discussion, are you considering or thinking that each floor would be like that, or going back to my vision of, you know, three floors of residential and one floor of...
I'm thinking each floor.
You're thinking of all of it? Yeah.
I think it satisfies, potentially, you know, the goal of the district, and also the unique circumstances of this site.
Yeah. If those types of spaces generally rent for a little bit more, then are we, by talking about that, are we locking ourselves out of the opportunity for affordable housing?
I would say no, from the standpoint of the kind of people that want to have, want to start a business, right?
Okay.
If you can rent one space for...
Instead of two.
$1,500, $1,800, right? And in that space, you've got both your business and your home, that's a heck of a lot cheaper than renting an apartment and then going and renting a space big enough to be a photo studio, or a, the guy who used to, one of the best bike fitters in the world had a space up in one of those units in EPO, or whatever they call that, on the other side. What's it?
I know you're talking, but I've been in the space.
Yeah, so, in any case, he actually asked me, he said, "Do you guys have any spaces like this?" And it was exactly what we're talking about. It was a small loft in an old warehouse where he lived and had his fitting space. And he was, he was looking for, there are going to be a lot of people, I think, that this would be attractive to.
What we would probably need to do, the way we require this, is that that second floor meet commercial-industrial building code standards, but allow residential. So, I mean, that's the, there are some building code questions that kind of come into play that we don't have answers for. So, if you're interested in this idea, I would ask you to sort of give us the conceptual direction, let us kind of work out the details, because I think it's going to take a little bit of work. We have been bumping into some conflicts between the zoning code and the building code recently on a couple different things, even the discussion about green building standards downtown. And we need to kind of solve that question with the building, the state building division before we can, before we can build in too much into the zoning ordinance, affects building.
Would a loft space, you know what I mean by a loft space? Be allowed to be built to residential standards, or would it be required to be built to commercial standards?
What Dan and I, what I just went and talked to Dan about quickly, was we were thinking it would need to be built to the commercial-industrial standards, and then we would allow the residential use in that. We need to make sure from a building code standpoint, that works.
And would it be required? Because you've just pushed the cost of the units up by $500 a month.
Well, part of, the first thing that I jumped about was the industrial elevator. I was thinking, oh, they can build, I mean, that's like, can we, could we do, could we require that? Because that's what you'd want, you'd want that industrial elevator. And again, it was this conflict we've been having between the, how much can the zoning code drive things that are set by the building code? And that was the question that just sort of flew through my head. We need to kind of solve some of those things. So, if you're interested in this idea, like, finding the solution that would have a commercial-industrial kind of space that is the loft-work space, I think, I think I got an idea what that means. And you want that elevator service, if there's other things that you want, let us, let us know, and we'll try to figure out how to package that. But right now, I'm, I think we got a couple of hoops to jump through with the state and the building code.
So, I'm going to just tack on there two things. One is that if we're going to have that discussion, we need at least a month. So, if we're going to go down this, we're delaying this at least until April, probably the second meeting in April to have further conversation about it. The other piece is that I would ask, if you guys are starting to coalesce around this as a concept, that we get a straw poll that says that there's a majority of you who are interested in going down that path, just so that we make sure we bring something back that will get general support of council.
I would be more inclined to perhaps incentivize it, but I don't like the idea of mandating it, because when you started your conversation, Mark, you said that part of our overarching goal was flexibility for this area now. And I feel like sometimes, as these meetings go on, we start to find ways to add restrictions. So, I think we're now going backwards. So, I think it's a great idea. I think in the future, you're probably right, you're going to see more of it, but to mandate it, I don't feel very comfortable with that.
To me, that was a compromise, and so, the flexibility is coming with the uses. And we talked about this a little bit, allowing more different types of commercial uses in the area. We've done that, I think, through the NME. We've added some additional uses that are not currently allowed. And so, that's where the flexibility was about, is about flexibility and jobs. And now, we're being asked to, now, we're being asked to be even more flexible than we've already been. And so, I think that, like, my idea was just a little bit of a compromise, that if, so, if allowing the flexibility of housing, it's not just going to be strictly housing. We're talking, okay, if, okay, if you really need to have housing, then it has to be associated with makerspace, with actually working and creating jobs.
I disagree with that.
Okay.
I mean, I understand what you're saying, but that's not where I am.
Yeah. All makerspace housing is not what I would envision. So, I'll still kind of stick with my original vision. If I, if I were going to permit housing on that site with the Mill End store as a model for the community, or for, you know, others to say, hmm, is this something that works? You know, how does it fit together with the other uses in this employment area and whatever? I'd see the retail on the bottom, the makerspace loft area, works, live-work, whatever you want to call it, and still...
Straight-up residential.
Floor, and maybe it's half and half. I mean, you know, but what the owner and developer are interested in is rebuilding that particular store because of what they feel they may face in the future, and being sort of the guinea pig for putting residential into an employment area. And I'm going to use employment area as the terminology instead of industrial area, because I realize the uses are changing. And I believe that in our new zoning, it's not, it's called the North Milwaukee Employment Area. So, the word industrial has gone away. And I don't disagree that it should be called the Innovation Area, because that's exactly what's happening in all, you know, smaller jobs like that, is they're becoming a lot more computerized, a lot more roboticized, you know, a lot more different kinds of things. I mean, look at all the businesses we have now that didn't even exist just a few years ago. Look at the way Socket Tumi does business with their design and graphics, and then send them out and have them made somewhere, bring them back, and distribute them from little old Milwaukee, you know? There's a lot of opportunity for that type of thing, and I would hope that a developer, an owner, and builder would see that that's a great market for Milwaukee.
I think this has the potential to be sort of the, literally, the kickoff of what the innovation area would look like. It's a brand-new way of thinking about buildings for the employment of the future. I'm really getting kind of excited about this whole concept. What do you think about her, her sort of halfway between, where it's a floor or two of the lofts and then straight-up residential above it? You could go there? Could you go there?
We're talking about the loft-work on second, and just straight-up residential on top.
Or two of loft-work and a floor or two of straight-up residential.
So, I guess I'm just, I guess I'm curious about what the, why, so, you just have reservations about requiring it all?
Well, I'm not sure how it would look from a design standpoint, and so, I've just heard Denny's concerns about industrial elevators and what you're requiring and such. And I think the more restrictions we put on it, and maybe that's the point, but the more restrictions you put on it, you know, the less likely it will get built, and I know that.
I did have one thought to that, and it may be totally wrong, and, you know, I don't know, but, so, the Mill End store gets these huge shipments in, right? And they get all these big rugs and, you know, all this kind of stuff. Wouldn't they, almost by necessity, if parking's on one level and the first floor retail, wouldn't they need a freight elevator anyhow?
I don't suppose to know anything about how they're going to build that building.
I don't know, but it just seems to me that maybe, possibly, maybe, possibly, because of the type of product that they deal with. I mean, I was just, that was just kind of an ancillary thought that went through my head.
It's possible.
You know, yeah. I mean, we don't know that.
I'm not a...
I know we don't.
I don't build buildings, so I...
Yeah, but I agree with, too many mandates will stop anything in its way, and we've got to find a way to, to help begin that turnaround of that innovation center, you know, if that's what we want it to be, and yet, give people opportunities.
So, do we at least all agree, though, that retail on bottom and housing on top is not innovative or appropriate?
Straight-up, just straight housing on top is not innovative, no. That's mixed use.
Right, it's just mixed use.
Not where it is, yeah.
So, I guess that's why I think we do need to come up with some standards that make it so that that's not what we're encouraging, that we're...
But the Mutza, we're not encouraging it there either. That's going to be mixed use, right? Has opportunity for it.
It is.
Not every part of ours, well, I don't think every part of our city needs to be innovative, and so, I just, I guess I get concerned when we have brilliant ideas that we think will look wonderful for our city of the future, and then we create these restrictions to the point that nothing really gets built.
That nobody's going to do.
But we're only talking about this area. This is only...
If this is such a wonderful idea, and I think it is a good idea, but why not require it other places then, too? Why is this one part?
Because commerce, because retail and residential mixed use is appropriate in other places.
And it could be here. I mean, you know, it depends on how it turns out. I mean, that quadrant, if that whole quadrant became housing, it would work as a mixed use. I mean, it would be all right. It doesn't look good now, when you think about dropping the housing in that one spot. I think it's bad. I don't think that, I'm not even sure anything will get built, really, if we just did the one parcel.
Well, then I'm back to my, then I'm back to my reservation about not including housing in it, because then the pressure is so great that, that it's the economic pressure that we're just eliminating the industrial nature of the whole quadrant without adding.
We were sort of starting to coalesce around, you two were okay with a couple of floors of the loft and a couple of floors of residential. I'm okay with that. I like the idea of all of it being live-work, but I'm okay with this.
If we, yeah, I mean, if we can come up with something that actually really requires a work, a live-work, loft-work, you know, component in addition to the retail on bottom, then I'm okay with straight-up residential on top.
Okay. And then the other thing that I wanted to, we haven't really talked about the area that's not the Mill End store.
She's still...
No.
None of it.
That's why I'm not even talking about it.
All right, okay.
She hasn't nodded once.
No, it's going to implode, I think, but...
So, then the next question is, the portion of the property that's not the Mill End store, do we want to require that the ground floor be employment? Because right now, if we're just saying you have an overlay that allows you to have housing, we're not necessarily saying, but not on the ground floor, are we?
I thought we already did.
In those other buildings that aren't the Mill End store.
And we never closed. Yeah, we never closed, so you're fine.
The proposed language for the overlay precludes standalone residential.
Okay.
So, it has to be employment. At a minimum, it would need to be part of a mixed-use development, or whatever, something like that, but we were not, the language would not allow just a residential development. It would have to, it has to be part of a mixed use.
All right, good. Thank you. So...
But I would point out, I mean, you do have some size limits on retail, but there's nothing to stop that from being, becoming competition for down... nothing to stop that from being, becoming competition for downtown with small retail going in there and restaurants and kind of what we're seeing happening in the East Side industrial. And then that becomes competition for downtown, competition for our neighborhood nodes, competition for our Central Milwaukee. Just keep that in mind.
And yet, at the same time, we, through our visioning process and everything, we also found out that the city at large wants to live in areas where they can walk to restaurants and walk to little corner markets and walk to the dry cleaner if they need to. And so that idea of competition for neighborhoods to the downtown or the Central Business District to the downtown or, you know, each to each other or whatever, doesn't fit with what our vision is of a...
Neighborhood nodes.
Neighborhood nodes and walkable communities, so...
And because people who live in Llewelling are not walking to downtown.
No, but we have a neighborhood node in Ardenwall, 32nd, that nothing is happening on.
And by the same token, we've allowed housing in the North Industrial Area for the last four years?
2013, I think.
And nothing's happened.
Right.
So this is why I'm not too panicked about this in general.
Right.
It's not like the developers are rushing in and building condos in our North Industrial Area.
No, they're starting in downtown.
But I think we have, we have, what Jerry Johnson said was, nothing pencils if it's a guy building a building and then trying to rent out that building. Absolutely nothing pencils on any of the properties. But when asked the question, well, what about owner-occupied buildings? All of a sudden, he goes, oh, well, then, all kinds of things are possible. And I was like, why didn't we get that study? Well, because what parameters do I put on that? How do I study that? There's no way to... That'd be a much more expensive study. So it's like, so we have an opportunity. We have an owner that's interested in developing and interested, potentially, hopefully, in developing this innovative live-work thing that could indeed start something really cool.
Because that could be the catalyst for the whole Innovation Area, you know? Or it could sit vacant, you know?
It could not change.
I haven't, you know, haven't gotten out my, you know...
Crystal ball?
Crystal ball recently and looked at that, but, you know, better people than me are saying, hey, we need this, and we need this, and we need this, and we need this. And so, you know, we need the jobs area. I mean, only 17% I think of our city is related to where you could have jobs. 47% of it is already residential, you know? But we still need 1,000 more units of residential. We know we need residential, but it would be great to have more jobs that, not just necessarily for the people that live here, but bring the other people in and let them spend their money in Milwaukee, you know, because they're here working.
I do hope that, you know, we had the guy from AmeriCold last time who was not the owner, but a man, you know, shift manager or something. And I do hope that the owners of some of these businesses are clued into this conversation because I do think allowing residential here, I think, you know, I'm not so sure it's so incompatible with AmeriCold right now, but it impinges on AmeriCold's ability to redevelop and expand.
I don't disagree with you.
It totally impinges on that. So I hope that those business owners are tuned in to this.
Yeah.
And, you know, we've heard that they all support, you know, Mr. Dietrich, but I hope they're really thinking about those things.
I've got a question for you. So it sounds like we're gonna be given direction to explore the loft work concept. Should we also consider applying it in the other areas to the north? Should we think about...
As an allowance or as...
Making it an allowed use. No, making it an allowed use up there.
Allowed, sure.
Yeah. Okay.
Not requirement, though.
Absolutely.
You mean the mutsa or you mean the whole area?
Yeah, the mutsa.
The mutsa.
Just in the mutsa.
Next to the...
Yeah, because I think we need to define this new use, loft work, whatever it is, and we would list it also as a permitted use in that area.
And we're gonna get the, because I don't know if this has actually got legs going forward, but we are gonna get also answers around what are the requirements if we were to go with an affordable housing requirement?
We're gonna explore that, yeah. And I think I can answer your question about the creek and going forward. And the staff report got at it. It is a complicated question because we could do it. It's just, you've gotta inventory it. You've gotta go through that entire Goal V process, designate it, and then protect it. We can't just, as part of this, say...
Say back now, 250...
We can't just say increase the buffer. So it's, you know, it's possible. It's just a little more complicated than the process we've gone through.
And potentially opens us up for lawsuits.
It does. To a potential taking charge.
Those are never fun.
Sounds like everybody is thinking for a minute. So, thinking for a moment. And my question is, you're at 8:45. You guys haven't had a break in a while. If you wanted to take a five-minute break just to stand up and then come back, you could totally do that and continue your conversation.
All right, let's take five minutes and be back at...
Have a break.
All right.
I told you the whole thing.
We're back on air. Wow, that's so... That trickle-in, everybody's still kind of wanting staff to come back to us and let us know if something like this is feasible.
Right.
Yep, I am.
Should we, are we discussing the...
The sunset?
Potential sunset, or are we...
Yeah, let's go ahead and go there, too.
They're still taking...
And you're still taking testimony at this point, so you're not...
So do we need to close public hearing?
Yeah, I have to, as long as you know that staff is, it's still open.
Okay.
And I just have a clarification question for you, Mayor. So we're saying that right now, you do have three people, Strubholz...
Four.
Four, to go back, look at this as a use, and then bring it back to council at a future date, probably sometime in mid-April.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so sunset provisions. Do we want to put some rails on the timeline in which we would allow this overlay?
I do.
Okay.
I would not want to wait 10 years. I would consider a five-year.
Would we also consider, well, I mean, in five, my concern about the sunset is that, and this might be a concern for another council, but if only the one site develops and we've got such a, this site is one, they've been looking at this idea. They've already done some due diligence. There's still a lot more to do. No one else in this area has been considering this as an option.
Right.
So, but to my original concern about if housing exists there, I don't want it to be an island in...
Well, most of it is their property.
So they could develop the rest of it, too.
Yeah, but not just.
Not all of it, but a bunch of it.
No.
Not if there's a sunset.
Well, so there's two ways to look at the sunset, right? The sunset could be that if a building like this gets built, that is now the overlay within five years. If it does not get built, it goes away.
Right.
That we could make it that way, to where you don't create that island, but they do have to make something happen within five years.
And I want it to be more concrete than just, you know, we have this idea. There needs to be a permit.
Oh, yeah, that's not making something happen.
Yeah, we definitely wanna write that hard rail of you have to have, pulled a permit or you have to have, and that's probably the hard rail, but we can let staff come back to us with what that hard rail is. If you have that answer now, God, you're good.
We've been thinking about this for a while.
Her fingers are now nubs from, you know, writing so much.
No, we, in the code that we proposed, what we talked about for the purposes of the section, that properties would be considered to be developed and that would enact the overlay. If all development permits have been issued for a project, that means you've pulled, they've issued building permits for your project. So that's, it's more than an idea. You've gone through whatever, pre, whatever you needed, but you've submitted, and if building permits are issued, then you're into construction at that point.
And the clock starts when we eventually pass this...
Correct.
Code.
Yes.
The building permits being issued means construction, so one of the things in one of their letters was needing three years to relocate the Mill End Store, blah, blah, blah. Building permits being issued means construction has to be in how quickly?
Building permits can be extended as well, so I don't remember what her...
I wanna say four years is a total. I think you have, I think your permit's good for two years, and I think you can extend it once.
And you can do them, well, you can extend every six months, I think, the way the building department works. So she has, they have, it's a she now, so they have the ability to extend building permits as long as things are happening or what have you, and she does that pretty regularly. Yeah.
Yeah, that notorious mini-storage is finally actually being...
Oh, yeah, exactly. They're clearing the land, yeah.
So does that seem like the right rail? Five years, building permits?
Yes.
I'm fine with that.
And then it's drafted in a way to address Angel's concern that it's not one...
Yeah, that once the overlay is established by the building of the... Yeah, that, once, once the overlay is established by the building of the first one, now the overlay is in place.
Right, but if it doesn't happen, then there's no overlay.
I just want to confirm what I just heard on that. So, the way, the way, so, anyone in, within the overlay, once they take, they take action, they get their permits, then by the, before the sunset period, so the entire overlay is now in, is that what we're saying? So only one property has to act on the overlay for the entire overlay to be permanent?
Can we make the permanent part a different, like, once it gets built, then the overlay is permanent? Maybe a two-step process? Because I, I don't, I don't know if that really satisfies, I mean, I don't know if that's in the spirit of what we're talking about.
Well, that's true, they can pull the permits and then not build, and then if that was the trigger for making it permanent, then it's permanent. Yeah, so, so it doesn't become permanent to the rest of the overlay until the building gets its occupation.
Okay.
So it's, it's
Occupancy.
Okay.
Or whatever it's called.
Okay, so just so that we're clear.
Right.
What's the timeframe that they have in which to actually have a building upright, in order for that to become
What's reasonable, three, you mean, after you pull permits, what's
Right, so right now, we're saying five years for pulling permits, so how long from that point do they have to construct for us to make a determination on the overlay? Because otherwise, you could do an extension of the permit
Right.
Ongoing.
And then it becomes permanent.
So how
Two, three years?
That's what I'm thinking, that, I mean, when I think about what I've heard about the other buildings that are going to be built, blah, 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 you know, a couple of years, so, max, three years?
We're building the library in two years, what are we expecting on Bernard's garages?
I think that you're probably, so that's from construction, right? So for, from the point you pull the permits and you're ready to break ground, you're at 18 months at the fastest, so I would say that you're probably looking at two years to be safe.
So two years for certificate of occupancy, and that that freezes, that makes the overlay
Permanent.
Permanent, okay.
Two years from the certificate of occupancy makes
No, two years from pulling permit, you have to get your certificate of occupancy.
So it has to be
So there's two clocks.
So what do you do when you've started building and you're 85% through, but you don't have your certificate of occupancy?
Then the occupancy doesn't, then the overlay doesn't happen.
But really, at the end, at that point, I'm going to want it.
Then you've allowed the island. Well, it would, I mean, the way we had originally thought about this overlay was that it's, you know, like, the property, you know, gets the advantages of the overlay, and now it's the whole thing, so if, if you don't have your CO within two years, then, then it would, then it would only apply to that property, unless we do something else.
So then it's just a problem for a future council.
Some of you will probably still be here.
Yeah, but that's, so
Well, I mean, make it three years.
Make it three years.
Yeah, three, three at least gives a cushion.
It still doesn't address the issue, though, if they're partially built, right?
That's right.
I mean, a building that's partially built, we're not going to tell them to tear it down.
Right.
And we're not going to want to have an island.
Well, but that's going to be a question for a future council at that point.
So then, so, I agree with you utterly. So then what, what is the trigger between pulling the permit?
And making the whole thing permanent, yeah.
So maybe, so I'm just spitballing again, instead of having anything to do with pulling the permit, it's seven years to certificate of occupancy, straight up, or eight years to certificate of occupancy, and that's what creates
The overlay.
The overlay, not, I get that we're pushing
In other words, we're not dividing it between the five years and the three years.
Right, you're not creating that ugly window that you've
Yeah.
Right, you just said
But if you pull the permit in the sixth year and you start building
Yeah. But you're incentivizing the, the person, the only person
Right.
Asking for this, already has a concept.
Right.
And so they could be pretty close to going to a pre-app, right?
Right.
And so we're, we're just moving the clock up a little bit by saying occupancy in eight years.
It'll have to be addressed by a future council. If that occurs.
Yeah, I, I can't see, you know, particularly this, this builder getting 85% and then stopping.
So just to clarify, what a future council's going to have to deal with is that right now, you guys are comfortable with the five years and then a three-year?
No.
No, five-year?
I'm a five-year building permit, done. Occupancy part, to me, just pumps it up.
But you can pull a permit and not even take a backhoe out there and dig a hole. So then you've now just created the permanent thing, just by pulling the permit, spending
But they do expire at some point, right? You don't get a building permit that lasts for 40 years if you just keep
If you're not, if you're not making any, any progress, the building official will put a stop work order, and she'll just cancel the, the permit.
But that doesn't happen until four years, and so we've, we've made a permanent overlay, and nobody's built a thing.
Right.
Permits are not inexpensive. I mean, we're talking about systems development charges and everything else, so
Hundreds of thousands of dollars.
It's a major commitment.
So they probably wouldn't want to spend that kind of money and not build.
It's a major commitment to pull the permit.
Yeah, okay. So if we just hang it on the permit at five years and call it
And then call, yeah.
But to clarify, it's a major expense that you don't have to pay every time you extend the permit?
Right.
No, but
So I'm, I'm more just saying this because if your concern is making sure that you don't extend the permit indefinitely, you pay that fee once to show your interest, but there's no, there's no extra cost, or substantial cost, to delay that six months. Okay.
So I don't know, what did we come up with? Five years on the
We didn't, so, so let the people who are much smarter than us, and are paid to be much smarter than us, think about this, and you understand the conundrum.
I do.
You understand that we want to put rails on it.
Yep.
We want a building built, and then, once the building is built, we want the whole area to be, to have this overlay, so that we don't end up with an island of one building.
Got it.
But we want the building built sooner rather than later.
Right.
So we have a general consensus that that's where we're going with this component. It's nine o'clock. We have not gotten into the construct, and I think we're probably done with this component of the NMIA.
Do you need the 24-foot clear height?
I think that you've, you may actually be putting that on multiple story, right? I think that how you design the building, if you guys are looking at the live-work space, could actually impact that number for multiple stories, so I'd rather come back to you with recommendation based on the total concept.
Okay.
And hold on that.
Sounds good.
So based on that information, you have not addressed any of the conversation about the remainder of NMIA tonight, and it's nine o'clock. We also have a couple of additional agenda items tonight, so the question is, do you want to punt that whole discussion till we come back? And I would say you set a date certain for the second
April 20th.
Regular, yeah, second regular meeting, that puts you at the 17th, April 17th, and we continue this conversation then, or if you'd like to continue the dialogue about the remainder of the NMIA tonight?
No, we still have other items on the agenda
We do.
Plus an executive session.
You have two executive sessions tonight, plus you have a legislative cleanup for the end of the session tonight.
I'd say we push it out.
Yeah, it seems like we're going into
Well, I'm going to say it was the hard one, but I don't know if that's necessarily true either, but this was the big one, that we have a lot of people that have come here to testify, and I think we've answered, we've given direction on where we are there, so I would be okay personally with punting the end of the rest of it until the next meeting.
I will also, just so that the public hears this, because so much of what we'll be bringing back is new, and you have not permanently closed the public hearing, you're going to want to reopen that for public comment at that point, to get feedback on the proposals from staff, based on your feedback, so we'll be doing a full public hearing at that meeting as well.
Right.
Can't you do that on March 20?
We could, but I think it's important for us
You don't want to go around this thing anymore.
To have five council members present, on, the real issue
When, when are you coming back?
The real issue for us is that you, we need a substantial amount of time. This is, this is, this isn't something we've done before. We need some time.
Yeah, of course.
Nice try, though.
Yeah. Okay, so, then in that case, I would need a motion to continue this to a date certain of April 17th.
I would move that we continue this hearing to a date certain of April 17th, 2018.
A second.
It has been moved and seconded to continue, oh, wait, let me find the ding. Adopting ordinances, there we go, thank you. Public testimony portion of the, wait, it has been moved and seconded.
Yeah.
To, to continue the public testimony portion of the public hearing on the North Milwaukee Industrial Area Plan and Code Amendments, file numbers CPA-2017-002 and ZA-2017-003 to a date certain of April 17th, 2018.
There you go.
Is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard, it is continued to April 17th. Thank you all for your interest.
Thank you.
Okay. You have Kelly. We have Kelly. She can come forward.
Kelly!
She has a lot of things in her arms.
She's loaded down.
So, council input on legislative, regional, and county issues with Kelly Brooks.
Do you have it coming up here?
So as a curiosity, can we plug our surfaces into this system?
I don't know.
I wouldn't recommend trying in the middle of a meeting.
No, 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 I just, it was, it was a curiosity, because I have to give a slideshow when we do the open house, and I don't have a laptop, so I'm wondering what I'm going to use to run the slideshow, but we can talk about it later.
We'll work on that with
Thank you.
So Kelly Brooks, Assistant City Manager. I'm going to do a few things, it won't take too long, I don't think. One is going to go back over the bills that I initially mentioned and tell you how they turned out. I'll mention a couple other items, which are new and exciting, and if I miss anything, just let me know, and I may have an answer on that, or I can look it up, what happened to it. And then I'll give you a quick update on the letter that we signed, the one federal issue, is related to net neutrality, and a potential resolution that we might want to consider on that issue, and then the letter to the PUC that we circulated via email. And then I've got a little running list of 2019 bills, so that's really it. So for, this is my, it says update number three, I never gave you update number two, because there was just no storm, but I did make it.
Let's do that first.
Right, it doesn't matter now, it's totally, it doesn't matter at all, it would just be a waste of your time.
I like your style.
Yeah, so these were the, kind of the dates I gave you, we're done, so, signing day happened on March 3rd, so the state legislative short session is over, that was early, which was kind of impressive.
Sure.
I'm going to put the best news, you know, really right up front.
Hey, hey.
So you all know that, yeah, Representative Karen Power
Yeah.
Did an amazing job, and as a result, there's $300,000 for the letting library in the final end of session, sort of capital construction bill.
And I just want to call out that really, this would not have happened without Samantha, her staff person as well. She was the person who really moved this through the system, and got in everybody's ear, and made sure that she was talking to the right people at the right time, so just in this moment, I want to thank Samantha as well, she really knocked it out of the park.
Go.
So, this is great, I don't have anything else, and the whole presentation is as good as this, so we can all just shine in the glory.
It's all downhill here, huh? Save this one for last.
I knew you'd just be waiting for it, so, so these are the ones that I flagged at the beginning, I said they were doing some work on PERS to create site accounts, that actually did pass, so they, they also did a tax sort of cleanup measure that could end up resulting, I think, in about $140 million coming into the state, and they've dedicated those resources to help capitalize these accounts, but they have a lot more work to do. The repeal for the gigabit property tax exemption, which was originally passed for Google Fiber, actually did not pass, and the League was unhappy about that. So there are some implications we probably need to look at and work through in consultation with the League about what that may mean for us. I know it's going to continue to be a priority for them, probably heading into 2019. Cap and Invest also did not pass, but leadership is committed to form a work group with, and committing to moving legislation in 2019, so I haven't seen any details about who they intend to put on the committee in the interim, but
Well, we know that the two chairs are Courtney and
Kotek.
Kotek, so
Yeah. Opioid epidemic, the DCVS study on barriers, that did pass. The building inspection, third-party building inspector bill did not move out. The gun legislation related to closing the boyfriend loophole did pass. These were, I didn't actually flag these for you when we first talked, but with respect to affordable housing, there was quite a few things that passed, and you all have talked about them quite a bit throughout the course of this evening, but there is some tracking that we're going to need to do now with respect to affordable housing, and that will go to DLCD, so we're going to have to work with, I think, Denny and some others on how that works for us. The legislation allowing municipal bonds for private projects passed, however, that does require a constitutional amendment that'll need to get referred out, so that would be the next step there. And then the big one, which you all have mentioned, was the increase in the document recording fee, and creating funding for technical assistance, emergency shelters, first-time homebuyer savings accounts, and other things as well.
So that's the document recording fee with who? With every locality? I mean, with the counties? I mean, I don't, I didn't
It's, it's on sales of properties, isn't it?
Yeah, you know, I mean
Oh, it's property sale?
Yeah, whenever you're, you know, refinancing your home, or all that, you know, whenever you're filing
Yeah.
Mortgage documents.
Okay.
I think, but I can get more on that, if you want. So that's really it, that's everything that I showed you, plus the affordable housing legislation. I did go in and check, there was some email back and forth on some land use measures throughout the session. One specifically related to airports, 4092, that I emailed the mayor about, because we had questions, and Metro had asked about that. That did not pass. Neither did the other bill, 4775, which was dealing more with City of Hillsborough, so
But what about the engineers, architects, and
That didn't pass.
That's the one that you're just now saying didn't
Well, that's a separate one. There was another bill that the League also supported and was pushing really hard at the end, that would have changed the procurement process for design services, engineering contracts. So right now, the way that it works, you can't get information on price until pretty late in the process, and this was going to allow you to get that when you picked your top three. It would have been a great tool, it got, it didn't pass out. It didn't, it didn't end up
It didn't get a vote?
It didn't, it voted out of committee, and then it got referred to rules. It didn't come out of rules, from what I understand. Unless you know something I don't know, which you might
I don't, but I would actually love to know what the arguments against it were.
The same ones that enrolled it in the first place.
Right.
Good lobbyists in those industries.
Yep.
And this is, I mean, just as a reminder, this has been really difficult for us, as we've been looking at some of our construction projects, and it's part of why we have issues with money.
It would be really beneficial to every municipality.
Yep.
So is the League intending to keep at this one? Is this
Oh, I suspect they are, but we should confirm that with them. They were really leaning into it, as you know, pretty hard, and I think it was really moving for a while, just didn't make it.
Yeah.
Didn't make it.
Okay.
So that's it for the session. Do you guys have any other questions about the short session bills, anything?
It was short.
It was short.
It was in demand.
Short, short session.
Go, Karen. So, with respect to, at the federal level, thank you all for your feedback, we did sign on to a letter that was, it's a resolution of disapproval for the repeal of net neutrality, it was pretty straightforward. What I have from staff that I can bring to the next item, if you'd like, is a resolution to sort of authorizing the city to weigh in on those types of matters, without bringing each one of them back. If you're interested in that, I'll put it in your packet. If you want us to keep bringing them back as we, as they come up, I can do that, too.
So specifically around net
Net neutrality.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So a resolution supporting the concept of net neutrality at all levels in any way?
Yeah, this is just, it's going to continue to be a big discussion topic for the next several years, and we expect, because, especially because of Reba's connection back to the groups that are working on this, that you're going to get a routine and regular ask to be involved in these. They're going to be consistent across the board of what they're asking for in terms of, don't do it, so as long as, or do net neutrality, don't allow for the laws to go into place at the federal level. So we're just wondering if you guys want to do one, so that we can sign on to everything instead of bugging you.
I think that makes sense.
Okay. Okay, then that'll come back, next time, we have the staff report drafted up, and the resolution would be with respect to the ruling.
Was there any net neutrality bill Was there any net neutrality bill in Salem? Because Washington just passed one. There was one in Salem?
I don't. I'm sure there was, but I wasn't.
It was a kind of a weird tweak one. I'm trying to remember how it worked.
Cities could, had to buy their broadband services from a company that provides net neutrality.
That's what it was.
Right, that the state could.
Maybe local governments.
Allow local governments to. Require, if, yeah.
You're offering it, has to be.
It was, it was, it was all about the market strength of governments. So to whatever degree you think that's a usable angle, that's what it was about. In my personal opinion, it was kind of weak tea.
Well, I haven't read what the Washington one does, but I mean, it was getting a lot of press, as like being, go, go Governor Inslee, he's the man, he's standing up to the.
The least articles I read are that he's going to court, right? Because he's basically taken on authority to make that determination for the state.
Yeah.
So that's federal, was pretty limited over the past couple months. And then the last one, I just wanted to circle back, there was an email about a comment letter to the PUC for, to resource value of solar. And that the current valuation of that, you guys tell me, you all know more about this than I do, is too low to really have it be a valuable incentive for homeowners. And so the.
And for, where this spun out of kind of was the whole community solar thing. So out of the community solar bill, they were wanting, the state was wanting PUC to set a value of solar so that that could be established, so that utilities could know going forward that this is what they were going to pay for solar, for these community solar. But it's going to end up getting used for everything if it gets established.
It's really low.
And it's very.
And it's not going to, you're not going to be able to purchase solar.
The highest, so what they did is they went out to the three utilities and said, what do you think it's worth? And Idaho was like one cent.
It was .001.
Yeah.
Kilowatt per hour.
The best one was PGE, and they were like four, .004, which is what I'm told is a realistic plausible level, is like 10 or 11. So at least more than twice what even PGE is offering.
So I emailed it out, thank you for your responses. I'd heard back from Council Parks and Councilor Adma, and I knew you were in support, so I did say that the city could sign on to that letter. So that went out. I assume, I haven't seen confirmation of that from the organization, Sustainable Northwest, I believe.
So let's, if we can, track when the PUC hearing is going to be so that I can go testify if that's of any value.
Okay. I can do that.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the other tracking issues. So so far on my radar for 2019, I have drug takeback. So you were interested in that, and you found potential legislation that might be moving next session, I believe. So I've got that on my radar. I have the oil trains legislation that Barbara Smith Warner had been considering, but said would be coming back in 2019. I also know that speed limits and local control over speed limit setting is on the list of things to consider and track for next session as well. So you don't have to know all of that right now, we've got some time.
Cap and Invest.
But if you, as you're thinking of things, if you feel free to send me a note, I've got a little list, so.
I assume some form of the housing bill is going to come back in 19. The, like, 2004, the concept about giving cities the opportunity to create rent control and/or no cause eviction rules or something like that, I suspect there will be something around that that we should at least stay on top of, stay aware of.
Okay.
And Councilor Beatty, I feel like there was a discussion that we were having around rail and.
Around rail?
Yeah, around the railroad in Island Station and the discussions we've been having about the railroad. So we'll work on thinking through.
Diesel, getting a decent diesel.
It was diesel.
Andered in the state would be extraordinary so that we stop being the receivers of the crappy diesel engines that are no longer allowed to be used anywhere else on the planet.
Okay. All right, I've got the diesel trains, cap and invest, and the larger housing kind of rent control type bill. And then I guess sometime before session, well before session starts, we should just talk through what are any city-specific priorities, so bills that will not move without specific advocacy on the part of the city. So we need really, you know, targeted legislative fixes that we need, you know, financial asks that we may be hoping to make. And so that will change how, what level of resource we probably need to apply in terms of government-related staffing. Issues that have an entity supporting them, you know, you can kind of track, you plug in, you help support. But if it's really, you work it or it goes away for the city, then that's a different level. So as we continue to prep and strategize for session, that.
So the one thing I don't know where we really left it, and you know, it's not something we have to discuss tonight, but is the, you know, annexation, what we, whether there's some changes we need.
Right, isn't the county still planning to bring something in 19?
I think the county is still talking about it. I'm not sure that they're going to be in the best interest of the city. You guys are going to, you know, we're going to have to review that as they draft them. And I think that once, we're going to be working on the comp plan amendments for annexation over the course of the next few months. I think we'll be in a better place to say exactly what the policy of the city is going forward and to work on legislation with them, if you guys are interested in it.
Yeah, I think that would.
After that point.
So for you, and we can talk more about scheduling later, but I'm thinking that August, September timeframe would be a good time for us to know where we're headed with that, because we'd need to.
So we probably need to start talking about it, like July.
Yeah, by June.
June, July.
You've got a couple of months to draft legislation at that point. People are going to want to know what their priorities are going into the session, so they're going to need to know by October.
Two bills, is that right?
Oh, in a regular session, she should get more than that. She probably was, I'm guessing, limited to two in a short, but I would hope she gets more than two in a full, but I can check that.
And she's offered. So she is very passionate about helping all of you make the changes you need to function.
So on the state level, the only other thing, it's not legislation, it's already passed, but that we need to be on top of is how they're going to roll out the Safe Routes money and how we get lots of it early on.
Right, yeah, I think I would agree. There's a whole other effort, too, around just what are our funding priorities for the different competitive pots? I mean, I know, I'm very familiar with what they are around transportation, what other additional ones, when are they happening throughout the year, and how do we best position ourselves for those.
What about the issue of tolling 205 and I-5? We want to be sure, we know what's going on with that.
Yeah, I can get you an update on that, definitely. It was just, last time I checked, it was starting to get real, like they were having some actual kind of results coming back in in terms of, you know, traffic analysis and other things. But I don't know when the next meeting is set. But they need, they actually have to wrap that up. The plan was to be done in May-June with the, kind of the public piece of that, so that they could, they have to submit, or the former legislative requirement was that they needed to submit to the federal government for the authority to toll on I-5 and 205 by the end of 2018.
Because ordinarily, it's only triggered by construction, so, yeah, new construction, and so that, yeah. Okay.
So I suspect they probably have a few more meetings, but not too many. So, yeah. Thanks, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Now you're going to close. If you wanted to do your messages.
Yes, I need to, I have a script somewhere in here. There it is. All right. Celebrate Women's History Month at Milwaukee Museum on Tuesday, March 13 at 3:30 PM. Amelia Gonzalez Clements will speak about the Milwaukee Historical Society Women's History Project. For more information, visit www.milwauquimuseum.com. The city council's study session scheduled for Tuesday, March 13 has been canceled so that the members of the council can attend the annual Police Officer of the Year Dinner and Awards Ceremony, which will take place at the Alk's Lodge, but I believe tickets are sold out. Anybody confirm that? No. All right. Volunteer registration is now open for the 2018 Milwaukee Earth Day event, scheduled for Saturday, April 21 from 10:00 AM till noon. This year's neighborhood cleanup event will begin at Ball-Michelle Park in the Luelle Neighborhood and include neighborhood streets and the Spring Water Corridor Trail nearby. All volunteers will enjoy a pizza lunch at noon to celebrate the morning's accomplishments. To register to volunteer, visit www.milwaukeegoregon.gov and look under Featured Events. After the cleanup, participate in an Arbor Day celebration from noon until 1:30 PM at the same location, which will include fun activities for kids, a tree giveaway, a ceremonial tree planting, and more. Don't forget to help the city get started on preparing for our 2019 Open Streets event, which will be similar to the past two Sunday Parkway's events that we have participated in. You can help us get started in two areas. Help us name the event. If you have ideas, please email them to events@milwaukeegoregon.gov or call 503-786-7568. Names will be accepted until March 12. You've got six days. Let us know if you're interested in getting involved. A public meeting will be scheduled this spring, inviting anyone interested to attend. In the meantime, if you're interested in getting involved, let us know by emailing events@milwaukeegoregon.gov or calling 503-786-7568.
So Wilda mentioned that Linwood Neighborhood has the Linwood.
Yeah, we're going to.
Adopt a road cleanup?
Yeah, Adopt a Road, we adopted Linwood, and this Saturday is a cleanup, if anybody wants to come help.
Is that 9?
9:00 AM, meet at Linwood Elementary School, and it usually just takes a couple hours.
Right. And I see the Rotary actually also this Saturday is doing a cleanup in downtown on, between the Light Rail Station and the Transit Center, where we have cigarette butts galore.
Oh, I know.
Good for them. Thank you Rotary for stepping up. But if anyone wants to come out and help them clean, I'm sure they will welcome the, oh, it's a Solve event even, I had no idea. And there's going to be a pickup basketball game afterwards. That's an interesting combo. So anyway, that is, cleanup starts at 10, basketball game starts at noon.
I don't know of anything else.
Anybody else, anything else?
I have one thing. I just wanted to make sure that the community is aware that 42nd Avenue is under construction this week. We will be done with construction on Friday, hopefully by 5:00 PM, we'll see. But we are, it's going really fast at this point, so it's looking like we should be there.
The whole paving, all the?
The paving will be done.
Wow.
Oh, nice.
Can I do a caveat? Yeah. Thanks. So that is the goal, and that is what we've shared, is to be complete on Friday. If that changes, we will let everyone know tomorrow, that it might be extending to Saturday. But we will let everyone know, and we will communicate that tomorrow.
And it'll be on Facebook. So if you're watching tonight and you want to know one way or the other, it'll be up on Facebook.
I stop by the bridge every, about once a week and look at the bridge, and the bridge is looking good.